Or three, two, one, over to you, Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much. Good evening, council. Now we're going to call this reconvened public hearing Thursday, April 1st to order. This is reconvening from the meeting on March 11th. So just so we have quorum, folks could make sure their videos are on. And just a reminder for others, staff and others who may be on this call that are not counsel, that only the council should have video enabled, just to give everybody an even playing field. This meeting's being convened under like by electronic means under ministerial order M192. If connection is lost during any portion of this meeting, we'll recess and to get people back online. And it'd be great if you are leaving the meeting, if you could let the clerk know so we can just keep track of who's here and who isn't. The live stream in this meeting has both audio and video, and it'll be, things will be projected on screen. Members speaking, presentations, amendments, and vote results. Members could, public can also listen to proceedings via the live stream and YouTube link, which is tweeted out at Van City Clerk. Presentations, amendment, and vote results will be projected viewers when available. Right. I also want to note, the city of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we'll avoid using gendered honorifics and will instead refer to the person by first and last name, or role and title. Lastly, following the updated guidance issued on February 5th, 2021, in-person participation for local government meetings is not permitted under the provincial health orders. Therefore, speakers who will be providing comments will be by phone and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when their turn comes up. So with that, clerks, can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Stewart in the chair. Counselor Carr.
Here.
Counselor DeGenova.
Present.
Counselor Fry.
Here.
Counselor Swanson.
Here.
Counselor Hardwick.
Present.
Counselor Weeb.
Present.
Counselor Boyle.
Present.
Counselor Dominado.
Present.
Counselor Bly.
Present.
Counselor Kirby Young.
Present.
The meeting has quorum. Mayor Stewart.
Great. Thanks very much, clerks. Of course, as always, we acknowledge we're on the traditional unceded territories of Muskum, Skowamish, and Salawitis people, and thank them for their generosity to all who live, work, and play on their lands. Also want to take a moment to recognize the contributions of staff here. I mean, you never get tired of saying how great our staff are. So I'm glad, we all say it when we start every meeting. So thanks very much, staff, for everything you're doing. Just to outline the meeting, speakers have five minutes. We have a number of speakers lined up on items tonight. So speakers will have five minutes to make their comments, and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. You should state whether you're support or oppose the recommendations. And if you're a resident of Vancouver, and if we drift into policy or other matters, I will just try to gently prompt folks back to the substance of debate. Speakers can speak only once, and should follow along on Twitter for updates so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments, any item can be submitted or writing to our online web forum, at Vance, sorry, at Vancouver.ca forward slash public dash hearing dash comments. And that link is also on Twitter. For speakers who are making presentations, just say next, and we'll go to the next slide, and I'll try to help on the way through if there's, things get stuck. Just a reminder that we are a quasi judicial body this evening, which means council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. We can ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant, or technical advice from staff, but we need to save debate for after the close of speakers. After hearing from speakers, council may approve the, in principle, the application to refuse the application, or three, defer the application for further consideration. Council, just so you know, it is not likely that we're going to get to item four tonight, and speakers have been advised of this possibility. So the next reconvened date for this public hearing is April 7th at 6:00 PM. That's Thursday, April 7th at 6:00 PM for item four. As a reminder, council, we have approved one item with no changes, then moved on to receive opening comments from staff for item two, ask questions heard from speakers, and close the speakers list. Item two is staff initiated, so there's no comment, sorry, no applicant. So now we'll return to item two to hear closing comments from staff, asking any, ask any additional questions of staff, and then move the item, and then debate and decide. So staff, we're going to hear your closing comments. And then, council, if you want to ask questions to staff on this item, please put yourself on the question queue. Go ahead, staff.
Hello, Mayor Stewart. Members of council, Dan Garrison, Assistant Director of Planning for Housing Policy and Regulation. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine.
Great, thank you. I will just quickly go over some concluding remarks before we enter into questions. I really just want to use staff's closing remarks to acknowledge that this is a challenging issue that we have before us this evening. We heard from many speakers with really two very distinct points of view. Landowners in the area did raise concerns about the impacts on land values, and their ability to finance new housing projects, and those sorts of things. Renters and renter advocates raised issues and concerns about displacement through redevelopment, and argued that this is an important step in terms of improvements in the city's renters protection regime. In staff's view, there is, and this is one of the challenges we face here, there is legitimacy in both of these perspectives and points of view. We also want to acknowledge that this work and this, and this motion before you really comes from council, a place of council's strong interest in renter protection, and that's been consistent throughout this term. At a macro scale, staff are undertaking some significant pieces of work that will be coming back to council in the coming months, notably through the Broadway Plan, where we're developing a new anti-displacement and inclusion frameworks that will help guide growth and change in response to the transit infrastructure investment in a way that supports renter households to remain in the area. For tonight, though, staff are here to help answer any questions that you may have. We have myself, as well as Ed Natcho, Senior Planner for Housing Policy. In addition, we also have Blair Herb from Coriolis Consulting here on the line with us to help speak to the financial analysis, any questions you may have about the financial impacts of the proposed changes. With that, I'll conclude my closing comments, and are available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. At the moment, council, I don't have anybody on the question queue. I know that-
Point of privilege.
Go ahead, Counselor DeGenova.
Uh, thanks very much. If you could, I just had a point of, I guess it's more a point of parliamentary procedure, but-
Sure.
I know that we have a large list of speakers tonight, a number of speakers signed up for other items, and just wondered if, if there was a possibility to allow the speakers to speak if we were to refer debate and decision on this item.
I'll have to check with the clerk whether-
Just looking for guidance for trying to see help for the public.
Yeah, our options are, yeah, just, just looking for procedural help from clerks. So what, at this stage, we're in questions to staff, the recommendation has not been moved. So I think we would have to, clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we go through this round of questions, so we would get to the point where we move the recommendations, and then I think we could refer debate and decision. But if, if the clerks could let me know if I'm right on that, that'd be great.
Mayor Stewart, it is the clerk here. Yes, you are correct on that. However, I have also been advised that agendas for future meetings are at capacity. So the, the hope was that we would deal with this tonight. But of course, that is council's choice.
No, I do remember talking about it early in our planning meeting this week. So, so I'm just going to leave that with count, council. Counselor DeGenova, did you want to be on the list for questions, or is that?
Well, I'm happy to be, but Mayor Stewart, I, if I could have followed up, kind of parliamentary procedure-
Sure, yeah.
As we don't close the speakers list because of public hearing requirements until the last speaker has spoken, wouldn't we anyways be putting this off to another meeting?
No, I'll-
It would be the speaker we'd be putting off.
Sorry, I raced through the agenda a bit. Just let you know, we have, we have two, we are finishing off C2, the debater-
No, I'm aware.
Let me just finish. We did, we did finish all our speakers to this item, and did close the speakers list. So the speakers list is, is closed. And so now it's just, to use the beginning of this meeting to make a decision on this item. And, and sorry, I do remember from a planning meeting earlier this week that our, there's really, unless we want to kick this thing months down the road, there's really no, there's not a lot of space on upcoming council agendas where this would fit. So that's the advice, you know?
So there's no speakers to hear at all tonight?
There are. There are speakers to hear tonight.
Okay, that's what I, that's what I was trying to get at. My apologies.
But there are a lot, there are a lot of speakers. So, but this item, why don't we see how it goes? And if it gets stuck, we can-
I don't think we can do that. You can just off the list for, for now, and-
Okay, great.
Thanks for letting me know. I was just thinking of the public who's waiting to do that.
Okay, thanks so much. Questions from Counselor DeGenova, or sorry, Counselor Dominado, up to five minutes, please.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks staff for the closing comments. I'm just wondering if you could, it's been a while since we dealt with this item. Can you remind me, in the context of this proposed policy change, does this actually prevent displacement of renters?
Over to staff.
Hi, this is Ed Natcho, Senior Planner in Housing Policy. So what, what this change does is it requires rental replacement of all developments in C2. So, and what we know is that primarily the majority of development in C2 are, are strata developments. And in the economic testing that we've done, what the analysis shows is that putting on, extending the ODP to C2 will have impacts to land values, which will result in a reduced development in these areas. So in the sense that there will be less development happening, those renters who are living in the rental units, who are, who are living in rental units in C2 will not be displaced.
Okay. Um, okay, I think partially answered my question. Um, can you remind me, was it that the Coriolis report, did it indicate that, so you would not see as much strata development, but also this wouldn't necessarily incentivize more rental development either? Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes. So the Coriolis report found that this replacement will not make rental C2 sites more attractive for 100% rental redevelopment at six stories, because, primarily because the right of first refusal requirement under our existing tenant relocation and protection policy impacts the viability of those projects, just as they do for strata developments. But what I'm going to do is actually ask Blair Herb to maybe elaborate more on the, the finding there. Blair?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, Mayor and council. Can you hear me?
Sure can.
Yeah, great. Thanks. So yeah, it's Blair Herb here at Coriolis. As, as Edna just mentioned, we did the financial analysis to help estimate the kinds of impacts that may occur from applying the, the policy to the existing C2 rental properties. So the question, Counselor Dominado, I believe, was whether the, the policy would reduce the amount of strata development happening on these properties, and I think possibly whether that would encourage new rental development. And so on those two topics, the, if the policy was extended to the C2 rental properties, it would make strata development of those properties less financially attractive. So we would expect there to be less strata apartment development on the C2 properties that are the subject of this. On the flip side, we don't think it would have any positive impact on the financial viability of rental housing development on those specific parcels. One of the main reasons is that the city has a policy in place that requires new rental buildings to offer a right of first refusal to any tenants that were displaced due to the redevelopment project. And that right of first refusal has a significant financial impact on the viability of doing a new rental project on those particular sites.
Thank you. That's helpful. I appreciate that explanation. And then just one more question to staff. Can you remind me, did you indeed, when we went through that marathon day on, on rental policy changes, did you in fact recommend against this proposal for a number of reasons that are actually cited in this report?
Yes. So staff's recommendation, when we looked at, when we looked at extending C2, ODP to C2 areas back in 2019, when we were bringing forward the secured rental policy, we didn't recommend bringing it forward at that time, because we found that there was no net loss of rental housing in C2 units. In effect, there's been a net gain of rental in C2 approximately 500 units. So, and we also found that there's significantly, is a small percentage of rental in C2, 4%, and primarily, the, the nature of these rental units are a couple, generally a couple of rental units above shops, so not the, the purpose-built rental, three, four-story walk-up, which has much more rental units in them.
Thanks. That's the five minutes. There's a whole bunch of counselors. I think I have five counselors for questions. So, yeah, lots of time for information here. Okay, Counselor Fry, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'm having some connection difficulties, so you may have to bump me off if I start losing it here.
Sure, thanks.
Um, I guess I have way too many questions, and been doing way too much reading on some of this stuff. Off the very top, reading through the Coriolis report, it seems to me that the right of first refusal is, is a significant factor in some of the concerns expressed around downvaluing these properties. I think it was in the neighborhood. Been any contemplation or consideration of adjusting our TRPP to change up the right of first refusal when it comes to these C zones as a direct result of this new consideration?
Staff, did you catch all that? There was a little blip in the middle of your question, Counselor Fry.
Sure. So I guess where I'm going with this is that, under our TRPP, we have the Tenant Rights Relocation Protection Program, we have the right of first refusal. And now that we are contemplating introducing this essentially ostensibly for C zones, and Coriolis report indicates that that is a significant factor in the downvaluing of these properties, have we considered amending the TRPP to address that specifically, the right of first refusal?
Thank you, Counselor Dan Garrison. And so we, we don't currently have a sort of broader policy process underway to review the TRPP. We did review it and bring it back, and this council made significant improvements to it in 2019, and that was the last policy piece of work we had done. So we don't have a process underway right now where we're looking at changing that. We have, as we're doing planning work, and I had mentioned the Broadway Plan, we are looking at specifically in relationship to ensuring that we aren't seeing a lot of displacement in relation to transit infrastructure investments, exploring new ways, including how the right of first refusal might work in the future around, around ensuring renter households can remain in the area. So that is work that's going on through the Broadway Plan, but we aren't specifically at, at the moment reviewing the tenant relocation and protection policies.
Right. But, okay, but so as far as the, and forgive me if I'm confusing the two different policies then, but the, the right of first refusal is the significant barrier here as far as the valuation of these properties? Is that, that is correct, right?
That is, that is correct. That's one of the key findings that, that Coriolis found, is that there is a significant, the, the right of first refusal process and the 20% discount to rent that comes with that, is a significant impact on the value of the property. That's correct.
And, and that policy is found in the TRPP?
That's in the TRPP, yes. It's not in the rental housing stock official development plan, which really just requires one-for-one replacement. That policy is in the TRPP, which would apply to rental or strata projects that are, that are resulting in the displacement of any renters.
So then it does seem to me that we should be at least contemplating adjusting our TRPP policies, considering that we are, considering a whole new zoning district.
Yeah. I, 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 I under, I understand the point. The way we have currently applied the TRPP is, is not to sort of specify a different application and zoning in different zoning districts. So we haven't done that previously, although I, I understand the, the point you're making.
Okay, okay. Moving on with my limited time then, I've been reading quite a bit about the, we heard about the process undergoing, going on in Burnaby, where the UDI and tenants' groups, and BCGU, and, and a bunch of people are sitting around the table talking about these various issues. And one of the things I understand Burnaby is talking about are, are density offsets, to specifically sort of transfer density, in, in, where we, we have these sort of, these exact scenarios. And I understand that it is permissible under the Local Government Act. From this report, are we saying it's not under the Vancouver Charter specifically, or? Okay, get around the explicit reference in the Charter.
Yes, that's right. You know, we, as part of this process, we did look at that option. It was also brought up to us through consultation. And again, while that idea has merit, we did find that under the Vancouver Charter, we don't have explicit authority under the Charter to, to pursue that. We only have explicit authority for heritage projects. But we do have Grant, our legal department here, who may be able to, to elaborate further.
Counselor Fry?
Oh, I thought Grant was going to come on there.
Oh, sorry about that.
So this is Grant Murray. That was the advice that I conveyed to staff, was that the only specific authority for a density transfer is heritage-related, and not for these circumstances? Sorry, I would, I just wasn't expected to be called on.
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, no. And, and thanks for jumping in there, Grant. I am curious, because it's, it seems clear that this is something that Burnaby is pursuing, and they're in the exact same boat with us, and, and the loss of these sort of older C kind of apartments. And-
Counselor Fry, if I could just add to that, the answer on that, we do, you're, you're right. We think that actually the density transfer tool is a powerful tool that could be used to good effect. It's just one we don't currently have the ability to use in the Charter, unlike, as you're pointing out, the Local Government Act. So it is, it is something that we could follow up on and pursue, because I think you're, you're on the same track. As Mr. said, it is, it was one of the options we explored around mitigation that we thought had a lot of merit. We just didn't find that we had the authority to do it under the current, under the current rules.
Thanks. We're, we're well over here. Counselor Kirby Young, up to five. Counselor, if you have more questions, because it was a while since we looked at this, we could always have a second round if people are interested, so.
I was going to ask about that for time, if we're going to be flexible tonight. Um, so thanks. A couple of follow-up questions, and I just want to recap, and I appreciated Counselor Dominado's comments earlier. And so, just to sort of recap the chain of events. So we had a report that came to council. The staff recommendation was not to pursue this because of the impacts that have been identified. And then the subsequent third-party evaluation was not to pursue this. Correct? In terms of, just recapping, can I just get quick yes or no's as I go through this?
Staff?
Yes. So in the, that's correct, that in 2019, we didn't recommend pursuing the extension of the ODP to C2.
And also in the recent report to council, right, prior to referral for this item?
I think in the recent report to council, given that the council motion directed us to do this work, and given the, the intent of the council motion was to increase protection to renters.
Yeah, I understand that. Maybe I can phrase the question differently. So you responded to council direction, but the council direction was contrary to the original staff recommendation. Maybe I can phrase it that way. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. And, and then also the third party. So the question that I have here, because this is about 4% of the city's rental stock, and you said we've actually had a net gain in rental in the area, is, if it's going to disincent the creation of new rental and welcoming new neighbors, and if it's not going to have a material impact on creating it, what are the other challenges? For example, what's the age and tenure of this stock? Because from what I understand, a lot of it is aging. So what impact might it have in terms of maintenance and livability of these units, in terms of their lifespan, the quality of living for people?
Yes. So the majority of these units are over 40 years old. At least 60% of, of the stock in C2 is, it was, it was constructed prior to 1975. So, so they are quite, they are quite old. The issue of building reinvestment is, is a challenging one and a topical one. You know, we know there are ways to do renovations through building permits. So that is, that is something that, you know, that, that is a root. But however, we also know that sometimes, you know, with the, with the, with the age of the building, that, you know, renewal and new construction is also a good option as well. So there, there is impacts, you know, in terms of the renewal.
Do you think that this would, so this is sort of a preservat, would you characterize this as a preservationist move? If it were to be approved, would it work against targets for increasing the supply of rental housing?
So, this, this move is primarily directed at preserving, protecting the rental stock, and it, it would preserve the affordability of the existing rental, rental units that are there that are more affordable. So it is, is definitely protectionist for existing renters who, who live there. In terms, in terms of the, the development, we do think that there is going to continue to be development for 100% rental. It won't, it won't increase, but, but there is, there is still going to be development. 100% rental. It won't, it won't increase, but there is, there is still going to be development for 100% rental projects. It's primarily the STRATA development that will be impacted.
Okay. So you're saying, are you saying naturally that as these buildings age, they would potentially be replaced, but at six stories? Is that where the development would come from, or are you looking at it as new sites?
The development trend currently that's happened over the last 10 years in C2 has been about 75% STRATA development and 25% rental.
So maybe I can ask, I'm just tight for time. Can I ask a question a different way? How do you align that comment with that from, we heard from the gentleman Coriolis, that this would have an impact on viability of rental? Because that seemed, that they seem to be at odds. Maybe, maybe I'll move on, and I'll just note that. But in time, to Counselor Fry's questions around the TRPP, to amend a policy like that from a blanket level without necessarily getting into area zones, could that have unintended consequences in other areas of the city?
Yes, absolutely. We think that, you know, if we're gonna look at the TRPP, it's definitely something that we should look at holistically applied for all tenants, because, you know, one of the things we'd have to look at is, why would some tenants get a higher right of first refusal and not others? So that's just something, that's one consideration we'd have to look at among, among probably.
You might have, for example, an equity issue, or you may have an impact on rental as a whole if you apply the blanket change. To make it more viable. Okay, I'll leave it there, because I'm sensitive to time. Thank you.
Thanks. I do have a, like, so we are in a public hearing, right, and we do have to consider the item in front of us. Ordinarily, that would exclude the discussion of wider policies like TRPP. But because it seems so linked to this item, I'll allow that, you know, ordinarily we shouldn't, but I do think that it seems to be serving value and informing our decision on this item, so I'll just if you have more questions, then, just so staff are alerted too, that there may be more questions on that, but on to Counselor Hardwick, up to five.
Still choking on the idea of 40 years being old. So staff, I'm referring to pages nine and 10 of your report. Can you tell me, in your experience, do banks generally weigh in on specific zoning changes such as being considered here? And did you invite all the big banks to the meeting?
Can I just clarify which meeting you're speaking, is it this meeting?
Well, specifically on page nine and 10 in the report, first of all, there's the page nine issues raised by financial institutions.
Okay.
And then there's a section on page 15 also about financial institutions. And then, and then the section financial institutions in connection with the UDI.
Sure, thank you for the clarification. I thought you meant this meeting, sorry.
Oh, no, no, in the report.
I got you. Okay, thanks. Go ahead, Steph.
Thank you for the question, Dan Garrison. It's certainly not usual, in my experience, for the major banks to participate in the kind of consultation that we were, that we normally undertake. In this case, it was a meeting initiated by UDI, and we understand that they, it was important to them that the lenders' perspectives were responsible for financing projects was heard by the city, and so the banks did, or at least one major bank did, did participate in that and provide feedback. But I would say you're right in characterizing that as perhaps unusual.
Okay, so my next question would be, how often have you seen banks make the statement that you've included here, quote-unquote, "Lenders express concerns related to their perception that the proposed changes signal instability in the regulatory regime, which increases risk from an investment perspective." I take it you view this as a significant statement, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It's not usual that, I don't think I've been involved in a zoning change before at the city. I'm just trying to look back over my last 12 or 13 years that major banks have made a statement like that as part of our process.
Pursuing this, did the banks state why they thought implementing a zoning change that their clients don't like signals instability in the regulatory regime at the city of Vancouver? Did they state why?
Yeah, I'm not sure that they were clear on as to why, but I do think it was related to it. The fact that the zoning change didn't come through, like regularly, we do a zoning change that comes through a sort of comprehensive planning process or a community planning process. This didn't happen in that way, and I think they were referring to that sort of process as their rationale for those statements.
Okay, but you also note, Dan, that this may impact, i.e. the banks' future decisions to continue to invest in Vancouver. That's a very serious statement, isn't it?
We, I agree, that's a very serious statement, and it is something that does, that is a concern for us, because of course, investments in rental housing are something that are needed to generate new rental supply. So we are concerned by those statements, certainly.
Unusual and based on one bank.
Sorry, I actually, I understand there were three banks involved, including HSBC, but yeah.
I'm sorry, what were those banks again, please?
I know that RBC, HSBC, and Bank of Montreal.
So do we know how serious the banks are? I mean, this is pivotal, is the, how serious are they? Is it speculative? Should we perhaps give it lesser weight in our deliberations? Or is the answer low? Is it higher or low? Is it's, that it's greater than zero? Should we have the banks come in and make a presentation to us about their concerns? As I'd like to know if they have intervened to the same extent with other municipalities on housing issues.
Well, those are, those are good questions, Counselor. I don't know that I can answer how heavily you should weigh them. I mean, I think it's generally true that financial institutions and lenders like stability. I don't know if they've weighed in on other zoning decisions or other, you know, sort of municipal policies such as this. And I think you were correct in flagging that it's unusual for us to see that as well.
We're at the five minutes.
But we're gonna have another round of questions.
We haven't had a motion for that. I just want to check with the clerks before I move on to Counselor Boyle. We don't usually have a second round of questions in public hearing, but I believe are allowed to. Could you just clarify the process? We just need a motion and secondar and an affirmative vote on that, is that correct?
Yes, indeed, that is correct, Mayor.
Counselor Hardwick, did you want to move for a second round then?
I would love to move for a second round.
Yeah, I just think it's so long ago that, you know, that I think it's really good to get refreshed here, so thanks. Secondar?
Counselor Kirby.
Thanks. All in favor, say yay.
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 Oppose, nay? Okay, thanks so much. So we're on to Counselor Boyle. And those who want second questions, you can start putting yourself on the list now. Counselor Boyle, go ahead, up to five.
Thanks, Mayor. My first question to staff is about what you expect the impact will be in terms of property taxes on the small businesses along these stretches. I know we hear regularly from small businesses that the pressure of property taxes is a significant pressure on them, and so I'm wondering if the expectation is a slight decrease in property values, if that will mean have an impact on those businesses in terms of that property tax pressure?
Yes, so what we do know is that, we did talk to BC Assessment as one of our stakeholders, and, you know, what they have said is that it might take a little bit of time before the reduced property values are reflected in the assessment, because the way they do appraisals is based on sale activity. So until there is sales, and that, you know, depends if people rush out to sell them, or if they hold on to them and and try to wait for the values to rise again. But however, if, let's say there is a a reduction in the appraisals, then what we understand is that 90% of the property taxes are there through triple net leases, so that the reductions will be transferred to the commercial tenants. And to the point that, until the point where they're renegotiated, which is at every five years, but yes.
Okay, great. My next question is I'm just hoping to clarify, because there've been a number of questions around this, and would I be right in summarizing that the study done suggests that this change would result in fewer STRATA buildings being built in these zones, but wouldn't have, wouldn't particularly have a positive or a negative impact on the number of new rental being built in these zones?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then related to that, I'm hoping you can remind council, my memory is when we were looking at policy around allowing six-story rental without a rezoning on these stretches, that this conversation about protecting the C2 units came up, and it felt like there's been a sort of chicken or egg conversation about which one comes first and how they relate to each other. So I'm just hoping you could remind us when we might council sent that back to staff, wanting this to happen first. Do you know when we might get that report back to us again?
Yes, right now, we are targeting to get that back to you with a referral date in fall of this year.
Okay, and I'm right in the assumption that that change would likely increase the amount of rental being built in C2 zones?
It would make it, it would simplify the processing. So we're not creating any more additional incentive per se, except that it will mean a more simple process that will reduce time and a form that is in a zone that's much more clear, so you don't need to renegotiate at every turn at a rezoning. So, yes, it will make it easier, you know, whether we're gonna see a lot more because of that. The intent of making that change really was to simplify, simplify the process and make the rules more clear, so people could could understand what they were, you know, what to expect from both sides, the public and the applicants.
Okay, and is there anything else council should be thinking about in terms of the relationship between those two policies in this zone?
I would say that in terms of the rental replacement, you know, that this change does, it doesn't impact the work on the C2 because of the C2 six-story rental, because the six-story rental, regardless, you are replacing the rental units. This, the impact here is primarily on STRATA projects, because those are the projects that will now need to replace the rental units.
Okay, so then I guess my last clarification, I'm just hoping, just checking that I'm understanding this all clearly. What I have heard before from staff is that we have been trying to create incentives for rental to kind of balance out the viability of STRATA versus rental in these stretches. If this proposal makes STRATA a bit less viable, but doesn't really impact rental, and then the six-story C2 makes rental a bit smoother or more viable, that all just tips the scales slightly and in favor of rental being easier than STRATA in these stretches, where we've so far seen STRATA be the more dominant option?
Yes, I would say it makes, it makes it easier to implement. However, if you have a site that just isn't viable, you know, because the value of it as a, as a income-producing, like, is existing value as a C2 site is higher than its redevelopment potential as rental. If this, you know, this change, the change won't, this change for the C2 to get rid of the rezoning won't help it. But the purpose, again, of the C2 change really was just to equalize the development process, so that, you know, you have a similar development process for STRATA and rental.
Okay, I see I'm over time. I appreciate we're doing a second round. So I'll leave it at that. Thanks. Thanks for all those answers, Steph.
Okay, Counselor Swanson hasn't gone yet, so I'm just gonna include her in the first round, Counselor Hardwick, and then put you back on. Counselor Swanson, please go ahead up to five.
Yeah, I'm wondering if staff can refresh my memory as to how much lower the rents are generally in these older buildings?
Yes, so 60% of the stock was built prior to 1975, and the rents are 40% lower. So I believe on average, a newer rental unit built in 2018 would rent about $2,500. And then the, built before 1975 rents at $1,500 on average.
So have staff done any calculations to figure out how much it would cost the public sector to replace? I think you said there were about 3,000 units in the C2 zones, so 3,000 units with that kind of affordability?
No, we haven't done that analysis.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Counselor Swanson. Okay, so Counselor Hardwick, second round, up to five.
Okay, thank you very much. Over to you again, Steph. I'm looking now at page 15 of the report. I'm a bit confused by the statement. Says the policy change will affect developers' property owners with existing financial agreements, as they will have to renegotiate the loans based. This policy change will apply going forward, so how will loans for the development in place be affected? Maybe, Dan?
So when we were talking about that in the context of the meeting, there are properties that already have, you know, loans or mortgages on their properties. And I guess if they were to, yeah, it's for existing mortgages. So if they were now to come in to redevelop, it would have an impact on their existing property.
Okay, that doesn't, so the report states, "In the event that redevelopment is no longer economically viable due to decreased land value, landowners who purchase these properties are faced with the choice of selling the property or significantly reduced value, or potentially foreclosing the property if they don't have the cash funds available to repay the financial institution." So that, if that's the state, do you have an estimation on how many properties would be in this position?
No, we don't. So what we've done here is we've captured the input that they provided for us. So that's, that's what they, that's what they've said.
So were the properties brought in in the hope of upzoning? Doesn't a developer always accept the risk a property might not be rezoned? I'm not understanding the logic here. And do you know, do you know if many of the properties impacted were acquired recently? Are these flipping properties?
So I mean, there's, there's different situations going on for, for different people in C2. And so this is speaking to people who have impact, who have purchased their properties recently. So that's a lot of what the, the impact will be.
So if the properties were acquired over time, as opposed to last week, isn't there a good chance that they can be sold without the owner taking a loss, given land valuation over the past decade in the city? I mean, otherwise, are you suggesting that the city should guarantee developer profits?
So I don't think we're suggesting that. We're just trying to lay out, you know, what, what we've analyzed as to be the impact on the land value, and then what different stakeholders, when we've talked to them, have said to us. So in terms of the land valuations, you're right, if somebody bought their property, you know, many, many years ago, you know, 20, 30, 40, 50, whatever, years ago, then they probably bought it at something at a very low value. And while, you know, if they were to sell it without the ODP being applied, it would be higher than what they would sell it with the ODP applied.
Last week.
But however, would they still be, you know, paying, would it still be, their value be more than what they paid for it? You know, if they, depending on when they bought it, yes.
Okay, finally, in terms of the BC assessment value, you talked about appraisals, you didn't talk about highest and best use on the current zoning. What are the implications there for? It seems to me that with the current zoning, they're going to be evaluated on highest and best use. not necessarily on other sales in the area.
Uh what what they had told us was that they would evaluate the um, you know, this residential this on um on on the sales, on the sales data. That's what they would look at over time to see what has changed when they do their appraisals.
Okay. Um well, thank you for asking my questions. Um I guess ultimately, should we be concerned uh that the banks willingness to invest in Vancouver will also be impacted of their view of the outcome of the Broadway plan and the Vancouver plan? I guess I'm questioning who who were uh who were looking forward to drive this bus. Is it the banks?
Sounds slightly rhetorical. Uh maybe maybe that's safe for the debate.
I'll I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Councillor Kirby. Yes, go ahead, councillor. Okay, you're on. Yep, go ahead, councillor Kirby. I might be on mute.
I'm sorry. Um thanks, Steph. I want to go back to some prior discussion that council had on this item. And I recall there was a concern expressed also, not just with respect to the rental units, but also the um older and therefore more affordable C R U's. And we had a couple of, uh I remember a gentleman quite well, I think he had a place on Broadway that had, um he had a couple of tenants on the ground floor and then rental above. And he was speaking to how those older C R U's becoming less attractive and more difficult to lease because of you know, whether it was sort of electrical or other facilities and all of that, and that this could make it more challenging. So I wonder if staff can just refresh a little bit on the impact of C R U's, because I know there was a sort of philosophical question, would this also serve to protect those? Um or is it sort of impeding similar to the age of the buildings? What people are looking for in sort of leasing space now? I'm interested in that sort of perspective.
So yes, we did definitely hear um from that speaker at the at the at the public hearing in March about the um difficulties of of the old uh C R U's. And he talked he talked about the low ceiling heights being uh a dis- uh you know, something that was uh preventing him from uh leasing it out as well as the age of the electrical and and doing the the upgrades. So in the sense that, uh to the extent that redevelopment is no longer viable in in um for some of these properties, then it will mean that um people will not be you know, redeveloping their buildings, uh these buildings. So you know, their choice would then be to renovate um and to kind of, you know, work within what they have.
Okay, and I also recall he made a comment too, because his reference in the report that it um sort of the impact on property valuation, could it make it more difficult to secure financing for people to rebuilding? But he had also expressed as an operator that seemed to have an intent to continue for a period of time, that it would make it more difficult for him to raise financing for upgrades, maintenance, building maintenance, age back, things of that nature. Any comments on that?
Uh yes, and that that is something uh that we have, we have heard uh that, you know, if you need to you know, renegotiate, uh then because you have an existing mortgage, then it will make financing more difficult.
Right, so is it fair to say that, you know, council maybe has to balance? There may be a perception, a lot of these buildings are older, therefore they may be paid, but they may not all be. So it really would depend upon the individual situation. Someone that's in a paid-off situation might be quite different than someone's carrying a mortgage, for example, on a on a building and purchased at a particular price. Is that fair to say? We would be dealing with multiple?
That's right, there, yes, the, you know, the ownership and who's, when people have purchased and the intention of when they've purchased. It it's all different across across C two.
Kind of like buying your house in Vancouver, right? Like if you bought it more recently. But we have policies that have to apply consistently, so we kind of have to think about the breadth of impacts. Um, okay, and if we're dealing with about three thousand units, I know councillor Swanson asked the question of what would the cost be to replace all of those? But is it fair to say that maybe that's a sweeping statement that we're probably not likely if council did not adopt this policy to see a full loss of three thousand units? Right, is that? It's the natural evolution as the buildings had to be redeveloped, but you could have some longer-term um building owners that did own their building and are happy continuing being landlords and would carry on, right? So it would be very much as a smaller number, is that right?
That's right. Um what I would say there is that we, you know, through the economic testing, we know that not all existing C two sites um are redevelopment sites. You know, some of them, again, if there's lots of existing rental units on site um or if they have, uh you know, they're producing a lot of income through their retail, they're not going to be redevelopment candidates. So uh that's that's one thing to keep in mind. Uh the other, the other um thing as well is that the uh the, yeah, so I I think that's that's the main point, that that they're not all all redevelopment candidates.
Okay, thanks for walking through that. That's helpful to jog my memory on the other elements. Thank you.
Thanks, uh councillor Dominado, up to five.
Um thanks, and and I just had a follow-up question I was gonna ask at the end there, just
Sure.
Um recognizing that um I can't recall the date on the Coriolis uh study, but in light of the pandemic, has this policy change been considered in in that context of what's happening in our sort of the current environment, rain and economic climates? Has that factored into this report coming forward?
So Blair Herb here, I I can speak to that. Uh we just recently completed the report. So it was reflective of uh current market conditions during the pandemic and sort of expected outcomes post-pandemic.
Okay, th- thank you for um um clarifying that piece for me as well. That's it for me, mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, uh councillor DeGenova.
Thanks very much. I just had a question. Um I'd asked this uh when we entered into questions to staff um at the beginning of this this um item. And I'm just wondering if staff might be able to comment specifically on nonprofits that would be affected? So how many nonprofits own uh property that would be affected by zoning changes in in C two?
So um we, what we know, uh we actually don't have that number on us right now, but we can probably uh get that. Okay. If you're asking how many?
I thought I'd asked for it at the beginning. I don't need an exact number. I I suppose maybe even what I could, what I could ask is have you consulted with um stakeholders such as the B C nonprofit housing association? To see if, you know, their members would be affected by this or, you know, if there would be a hardship on nonprofits that recently purchased sites and we're going to be providing non-market um affordable or even sheltering.
Uh we we didn't. Um however, it's it's a similar situation with um market rental. If they were to redevelop, we would assume that they would be replacing all of their their units, which which are rental in ten years. So that the impact wouldn't necessarily uh uh, you know, it wouldn't be uh this uh this impact on them.
Um I understandable, but some some nonprofits do structure. Um I understand their housing so that it is strata and it is um perhaps even owned by a number of nonprofits together. So I'm just wondering if this may have any uh negative effect on them?
Uh we haven't looked into that. Uh that isn't something that uh we we are aware of. Um however, we do know, you know, there's not a lot of uh nonprofits in the in C two. Like over the last uh ten years, I believe there's only been uh six redevelopments. And most of them, the majority of those, the five or the six were on city land. So it's not um, it's not something that uh that happens a lot in C two, because they're generally high-value areas.
Okay, and and C two right now, um would would we say that that these um that's that's a current uh strata model actually provides rental? And so how how, do you have numbers on what percentage of those units actually are rented out?
Uh we we don't. Uh generally though, uh we know that uh in terms of um a secondary like rented condos, uh there's an estimation of uh thirty percent of units are 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 rented. Uh but usually th- those are more in um in term, in sort of the the the, yeah, the the four-story strata buildings. So that's 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 usually the estimate we know city Y. We don't have that number for C two. Um also, uh councillor DeGenova, to your early earlier question, uh we got that number for you. So there's fourteen non-market housing sites in C two.
Fourteen non-market housing sites in C two. Uh thank you, that's very helpful. Just a follow-up to my previous question and, you know, perhaps, you know, forgive me for my ignorance of of the process. You know, I I understand and and appreciate the policy report. I think it was very thorough, the re- refer report. Uh but as to, you know, staff concerns and uh talking also about financing. But when we look at sort of, if we're looking at our rental O D P and making changes that will affect owners and possibly renters, would we not look at already how many of these units are rented? Would that not be something that typically would would be part of the work undertaken that brought us here to public hearing?
Um I I think in this situation, typically the the sites that are redeveloped are going to be uh the existing, I I guess the work here was to look at the impact of um, you know, the land, uh impact on land values um and the impact to renters as well on what this change would would uh mean. And so that that's kind, that's what we did. So we didn't uh look at uh how this would impact the secondary stock. But one thing I would say is that, you know, when redevelopment candidates, generally the sites that get redeveloped in C two are are not existing stratas. They're, they are just the sites that have the one to two, you know, units of of rental uh uh on the top.
Thanks for
No, I I understand. And if I could have a second round, ma'am, if you could add me, please, thank you.
Have you not, oh, okay.
No, I'm on my first round.
Okay, councillor Weeb?
Um yeah, I'm looking at the back, bottom page eleven where it says that this will not affect new six-story rental. And so for me, it looks like enabling six-story rental with simplified design guidelines and not having to go to rezoning is a benefit to increase affordability um and is a increase to the property opportunities. And so I'm wondering, it looks from reading this that we will see more six-story rental on C two if this is passed. Is that correct?
We, you know, I I we mo- we haven't found that it's going to have a, you know, necessarily a more positive or negative impact. That was what the testing found, and maybe I'll I'll let um Blair speak to that. But you are right that the simplified design in terms of implementation and compared to the current development processing for rental right now, going to a six-story um, you know, uh zoning change.
Yeah.
Yes, would would definitely help those projects. But in terms of the viability, the testing found that this change would
Can I jump in?
Yes.
It's Blair. So I I think it's important for people to think of there being actually two separate things happening here when you talk about C two and rental. There's the, there's what we're talking about tonight, which is requiring existing rental properties in the C two district to replace rental units that are demolished. That's, and and in that circumstance, what our work has shown is that these sites that have rental on them right now are really not financially attractive for redevelopment to rental. Because the city has a rental, has a policy that requires uh a right of first refusal for any tenants that would return to the new rental building. And that negatively affects the financial performance of a new rental development on a site that is demolishing existing rental. There's a separate C two process underway that Edna and others have been referring to about changing the zoning in C two to encourage new rental development at six stories. That's a separate issue. Our view though on on that topic is that these specific sites that we're speaking of this evening probably are not the sites that would redevelop to six-story rental. Because they would still have be subject to this right of first refusal that would make them less attractive for development to rental.
But they're less attractive to strata?
Um currently, some of these sites that have rental on them would be attractive for redevelopment to strata under current C two zoning. If the policy is adopted this evening that you're speaking of, it would make many of those sites less attractive for strata development. So they would not be attractive for strata development, and they would still remain to not be attractive for rental development, which would mean they would effectively be sites that are kind of sterilized, is one way of thinking about it. The status quo would exist for a longer period of time on these particular properties.
Okay, I why would a single-story commercial with two resident or residential above not be attractive for rental if I'm going to a six-story building?
So I'll I'll keep going there. So I'm not saying that it would never happen, but it would be the least attractive C two site for redevelopment because the new development has to offer units to the existing tenants at twenty percent below rent rental rates. Whereas a a different C two site would not have to do that in a, you know, in a new rental development.
Yes, but it doesn't mean that this is not a desirable, uh you're right. If I could have an empty site, that would be the best, because I wouldn't have paid demolition costs and I wouldn't have pay T R P and I wouldn't be losing a commercial space. Okay, um second, on the valuation, I was really intrigued by evaluation using only one metrics. Recognizing when you do lending normally, they are looking at valuation of other properties that are sold, cost of building and cost of land purchase and other financial figures. So I'm just wondering why you would use that metrics to do your valuation?
If that's directed to me, Blair, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what metric you're talking about.
Actually, at the five, but councillor Weeby, you are, that is your first round, so you could go back on a few more. Thanks, I've just put myself on the list, um oops, twice now. Um so, uh question to staff, so uh you know, we we have a bunch of these buildings, uh commercial buildings with uh rental units on top that were built in the seventies. And what we're trying to decide tonight is to whether whether to extend a additional policy to these buildings. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right, so it's not that we're removing anything from what's already existing around these buildings. We're looking at extending something new to uh these plots of land, which is different than our normal public hearings. And I think that's what's hard to get our, my head around anyway. Uh so my second question is, the buildings that, the the lots that we're discussing right now, the the C two stuff, the the commercial buildings with um with the the rental over top, are they currently protected by the T R P P?
Yes, they are.
Right, so the
All development in C two is uh is protected by the T R P P.
Right, so if if uh if one of these buildings is redeveloped, then uh all the features of the T R P P would apply to the affected tenants. And can you just, you know, give me three or four points on on what those protections are currently?
Yes, so the T R P P requires compensation scaled at the length of time that a tenant has been there. It requires that the tenant has, uh that the applicant has to pay for moving expenses. If uh if the tenant desires help in assist uh finding a alternate accommodations, uh three choices have to be provided. And for tenants that are, uh you know, uh there's a, there's a process to determine if there are vulnerable tenants. And if there are vulnerable tenants, one option must uh be found that is as, you know, that is affordable to them at thirty percent of of their income. As well, there's the right of first refusal at twenty percent below uh below the market rate.
Great, and that already applies to these to these lots that we're talking about?
That's correct.
Yeah, right. So if we extended this new policy on on top of these buildings, what would be the major change? The the tenants wouldn't really be affected. The T R P P still applies, is that right? Or is there any extra protections to these tenants?
The major change, uh in terms of the T R P P, there would be no major change. If if that redevelopment happened, it's the same, it's the same process for uh through the the TRPP. However, the, the major change here is that there would be less development. So there would be less displacement of renters.
Right. But there's, so I'm just trying to understand that the reason there'd be less development is because there's a requirement now for a one, one-to-one replacement of rental units? Is that what the?
That's right.
That's the main change?
That's the main change. And it's an encumbrance, has a big impact on land values. And that is why this report is different than other reports you see, you know, at public hearing, which is usually, you know, a change for, for a new multifamily development or something with more density.
Right. So this is, I got you. So however, though, however you look at it, the, whatever we do tonight, the tenants are still protected under the TRPP whether we approve this change in the report or whether we decide to reject it.
That's right.
Okay, great. Thanks, that really helps me. Thank you, councillor Dejanova. Go ahead for your second round.
Thanks very much. I do have a, a follow-up question for staff. I'm wondering, after, after, and I know this isn't perhaps a typical report, but when we consider something like this at public hearing and specifically this report, would you have a concern that a change in direction and policy right now would encourage an influx of applications to come through? PDS?
I think that's, it's hard to speculate. Are you sort, in terms of how we've structured the, we have structured some, the way that the report currently is structured is that the enactment of the ODP would happen, you know, immediately. If, if council were to approve this change tonight, the enactment would happen, happen immediately. So the ODP would apply right away. So I, I don't think that would happen. We have grandfathered in any, you know, the proposed proposal in the report is that we grandfather in anything that's already in stream.
So, okay, grandfather anything that's in stream, but not grandfather anything that's not in stream right now as of the council's decision. Okay. And if that, just to, just to follow-up question to that would be, if that were to be extended, that grandfathering, would you expect that that amount of time would be when the influx of applications were to come?
So I, I guess you're asking if council decided tonight to, to.
Extend the grandfathering.
I see. Potentially? Are you saying that potentially people will want to come in and not have to, you know, go through the ODP? Potentially that could happen? And. It's hard to say though, it would, it would still depend on the, you know, the viability of the project right now, all, all of that, but that's, that is a possibility.
And just a follow, follow-up question to that would be, and considering last night, and, and the reason I ask this is I'm wondering, council's decisions obviously have an effect on, on how, how things work at the city of Vancouver. So, we've heard that Development License, oh, sorry, DBL, Development Building and Licensing, that department is overwhelmed. We know that Planning, Development and Sustainability is as well, that the two departments work together. If you saw a large influx over the next, whatever it was, year, two years, whatever that extra grandfathering period would be, would that add more stress to an already overwhelmed system?
Hi councillors, Dan Garrison just jumping in on that one. Certainly, we are aware and all concerned about the situation in DBL and the need to focus on the permits that are in place now that need to be processed. So I think i- in terms of any risks related to a, a sort of rush of applications, were there to be some kind of grandfathering brought in? I think it would depend on how the grandfathering was designed, the length of time that was, was provided, and, and so it would, it would kind of be one of those devil in the details kind of pieces where we would want to, want to think about the risk you're raising in terms of any, any sort of in-stream protection that, that would be potentially designed.
Okay, that's very helpful and that's all of my questions. Thank you.
Hey, thanks so much, councillor Weeby, up to five?
Yeah, so I guess I'll follow up on the mayor's comment. So the TRPP doesn't change here. So the only thing we're voting on today is the one-to-one replacement. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. And we are also, this would happen immediately today, and then we would have another C2 planning that would look at incentives for six-story simplified use in the future. And that's going to come to us in a couple of months. Is that correct?
Current, yes. The plan currently is to target that for a referral to public hearing in the fall.
In the fall. Okay. So seeing that, recognizing that this is just one-to-one replacement and it's not changing the TRP, I will be supportive of this.
We haven't quite moved that yet to councillor Weeby, so we may want to wait.
And then I guess, well, I guess one more question. The commercial units, the affordable commercial units, I know that when we talked about this prior, we talked about the opportunity to have information back on what type of units, how long the business has been there, the amount of legacy businesses in these C2 zonings, recognizing that when we do have redevelopment, we traditionally see national companies and other companies take over those spaces. So this is something that the public is very vocal about, is preserving this type of small business. So I'm just wondering, do we have any information on the types of tenants that normally are in these C2, C2 zonings?
We don't have that information on us right now, but we can definitely follow up with staff in the employment lands review and, and get that information to you. Or we can also bring that back as part of the, the C2 six-story work.
Okay. And if, and when you bring back the C2 work, it'd be also great to know the square footage pre and post, recognizing that we did hear from the property owner that said that sometimes you don't have the same electrical ceiling heights. They normally rent at a more affordable rate, which is key to certain business types in Vancouver to them continue to survive. So it'd be great to have that information when it comes back to us. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Swanson, up to five?
I'm ready to move the report, the recommendations.
I don't see anybody else on the list, so I will move the report. Do we have a second?
Point of privilege, if you could be added to the list?
Hold on, everybody, hold on. I did, I'm sorry councillor Fry, I did hear a mover and a seconder though, so you can still ask questions through points of information.
I have a point of privilege, if I could be added to the list, please, Mayor Stewart. Thank you.
Okay, so on debate here, councillor Swanson, you moved the motion, so I'll add you first. And anybody else that wants to know, anybody else who wants to get on the debate queue, please put yourself on. Councillor Swanson, up to five minutes. You don't have to say anything, but you moved it, so if you'd like to, go ahead.
Page three of the report has absolutely crucial information on it. Number one, the median income of the renter household in Vancouver is $50,000. Number two, that Vancouver's older rental buildings rent at a rate of nearly 40% lower than newly constructed rental buildings. And the report says, as a result, existing rental housing makes it possible for moderate income renters to live in Vancouver and helps maintain a diverse population in the city. We also know we are dealing with over 3,000 units in the C2 zones that are probably at about 40% of market rent. And by my calculations, it would cost us about a billion and a half to replace these units with the current affordability. So I think we should keep them as long as we can. It's not just the UDI and the banks who are stakeholders here. 53% of the tenant, of the residents of Vancouver are tenants. The tenants are stakeholders too. And I bet you if we would have had a meeting of tenant groups, we would probably be having a lot of recommendations from them about why it's necessary to keep or to have renter protect, have the rental housing stock official development plan apply to C2 zones. The question is, will we give tenants the TRPP protection when they're in C2 zones like they have in other zones? But will we also give them the rental housing stock official development plan protection like 70% of the rest of the tenants of the city have? And it's clear to me that if we don't go for protecting the tenants, we're going to be going for protecting the developers and the bankers, and I am going to go for the tenants. Now, the property owners say you're lowering our property values. I say, good. High property values are the main reason that housing costs so much in Vancouver and we need to stop property values from increasing where we can. And good again, maybe if the property values come down, some nonprofits who want to build rental housing that's actually affordable will be able to afford the land when the price comes down. And when the banks and the owners, lobby groups say we'll get a bad, bad reputation for being unstable and they may not invest in Vancouver, reminds me of back in the seventies when we wanted the SRO owners to put sprinklers in the SRO hotels and they all said, oh no, the sky is falling. We can't possibly do that or we'd go out of business. And in those days, about seven people a year were dying in fires in the SROs. And the city stuck to its guns. They didn't go out of business and we've probably saved about 300 lives because the city stuck to its gun. If this passes, we give it, get a teeny bit of more protection to thousands of renters because it won't be so profitable to knock down their homes and build condos. We give a teeny bit of protection to small businesses for the same reason. We slow down gentrification and we say to developers, you have to build rental, which is what we want and need, not strata. And I just thought I would note, because I found it quite humorous, that page C19, C119 of the 2021 budget book, this action is listed as one of the top accomplishments of 2020, protecting tenants by applying the rental housing official development plan to C2 zones. So you guys, I think we need to do this. I think we need to show that this is a council for tenants, that this is not a council for developers and bankers.
Councillor Hardwick?
Thank you. Without a doubt, the most affordable housing that exists is already built and the housing that we're talking about here, the rental housing today fits into that category. And really what this is about is, is this policy is only a one-to-one replacement of existing rentals. And I highly question the claim that this will have much effect on land values, which was in large part the reason behind my questioning around the banking influence on this, which I will still like to have answers to those questions from staff. This is a modest rental protection that we owe existing renters. And this has been in place for decades in RM zones without problems and it's the least we can do at this point. I'm not convinced overall that, that this balances off. There's a lot of, of development in the pipeline and a lot more coming down the pipe from what I can see. And this is one example where we should protect what exists in terms of that one-to-one replacement requirement. So I support this motion, or support the recommendations of the report.
Councillor Dejanova, up to five?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was muted.
You're fading out now.
Oh. Can you hear me now?
Fading out.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Mayor Stewart?
Yeah, go ahead.
I will not be supporting this. It's, it's difficult because I usually do support rental housing and my voting record will show that. But I also am very concerned, you know, that, that we, you know, not considering the unintended consequences that will come with this. I, I just heard one councillor suggest that everyone who's a part of UDI is a banker or developer, I think is what I heard. But I also understand that nonprofit organizations that come to the city, that we pat on the back, that we thank for housing people in our community who otherwise would be or have been homeless, they're also members of UDI. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that we don't really have any idea about these 14. Yes, maybe it's only 14, but it's still 14 housing sites. And we've talked about a lot less here at council. And I know that those, those sites I'm sure could make a difference without understanding how it's going to affect those nonprofits who may be structuring the way that they work with housing and other housing operators, joint ventures. I'm very, very concerned. I'm also concerned, I mean, there's, there are a number of concerns I have here. I have, I have concerns that we actually see an influx and, you know, I, I wasn't going to say this because I don't think it's fear mongering now that it's confirmed. But, you know, our council last night, you know, there was some debate about whether or not we should be putting more work on our staff. And I do have a concern that when we look at something like this, that really it, it is, you know? Although some are arguing that the change isn't going to be that big, I'm concerned that it actually will be, especially considering the financial ramifications of financing these sites. I'm not sure what each financial situation is for each property owner or property owners who are, you know, co-owning buildings here. So for that reason, I am concerned that not only may, may properties change hands, but then we may see an influx of development. You know, the grandfathering is one thing, what's in flux right now, but I certainly would be concerned if we were, you know, not also being fairly considerate in extending them. Maybe there are some people that in COVID-19 were planning to enter into those arrangements but simply couldn't. And I think that COVID-19 puts an even greater strain on them. So when we, when we were sitting in council chambers and originally talking about this, we weren't even in this situation. But I think that we have to look at the financial ramifications and, you know, to, to some of the other points, that we have to lower property values in the city. Well, we have to, we have to make housing more affordable. I agree with that. But to lower property values, I mean, I, I wouldn't say that this is going to lower them all the way down to the, to, to amount, to the land being worth less than perhaps some of the mortgages. I suppose it depends, as staff said, on when you bought your building. But because I think that this will send a message, that this, you know, this is how the city of Vancouver operates, that this is how we are going to move forward and change policy, we're going to see less people come to the table. We create solutions on, on a spectrum of other housing options that we talk about around the council table. So each time we make these decisions on these specific policies or tech, or we apply our policies to amendments, to official development plans, or we're considering certain projects, I have to consider the bigger picture. And for that reason, I won't be supporting this.
Thanks.
But I'd like to thank staff for their work and I'd like to thank all of the speakers on both sides that came out.
Okay.
And rest assured that I'll continue to support rental housing. Thank you, Mayor Stewart.
Thank you. Councillor Boyle, up to five?
Thanks, Mayor. I will be supporting this. I heard pretty clearly from staff that these changes wouldn't significantly, sorry, wouldn't significantly increase or decrease the rental, new rental that we see in these areas, but that it would result in less condo development or strata development. Also, I heard quite clearly that the assumption is that over some time it would dampen the speculative increases in land values that we've seen in C2 that have had such a detrimental impact on many of our commercial small businesses on these beloved little commercial stretches in each of our neighborhoods. That matters to me. Of course, these are difficult decisions, but the bigger picture for me is that we need a combination. that we need a combination of these challenges, of these policies, which is why I was asking about not just this change, but the discussion that we've been having about making it easier to build and faster and smoother to build rental housing in these stretches as well as off arterial. My sense, and past councillor Gordon Price writes about this well as the grand bargain, is that a lot of our history of zoning has been encouraging and incentivizing new development just on arterials, and that's seen us had a significant impact on our small businesses, on those stretches, and on the land values there. We need to, we need to shift that. And I think this policy is one piece of that. It's, it's not going to solve everything. It's also not going to result in the sky falling and making it easier to build new rental in C two, particularly where there isn't already rental, so that we're seeing more rental than condo, but more rental on those stretches, as well as seeing more rental off arterial. All our pieces of this puzzle, so that we are protecting our existing rental stock, we're making it easier to build new rental stock, and we're reducing the dramatic speculative impacts and pressures that our small businesses are experiencing on those stretches. All of those are my goals. So, you know, if, well, I'll just say all of those are pieces that I think need to work together, and this is one part of that. And so I'm, I'm quite happy to support it. Again, as someone who supports new rental housing, who wants to see us build a lot more new rental housing across the city, but not at the expense of the existing rental housing that we have.
Thank you, Counselor Fry.
Yeah, thanks. I, I was wondering if I, I didn't get a chance to ask a question that I was hoping to ask through you, Mayor, of staff. Has there been any, I, I know when New Westminster introduced some new rental protection bylaws that effectively were set to downzone properties that they faced a lawsuit, and I believe they won that lawsuit and challenged. But has there been any concerns from legal perspective as far as the potential for a lawsuit on this?
So, yeah, point of information to staff, whoever you feel is appropriate over there.
Sorry, it's Grant Murray, I'm the lawyer monitoring this. My understanding is that council can downzone and won't be responsible for that. If there's some other slip-ups along the way, then you could, anybody can obviously sue about it. But if it's simply a matter of whether or not it's lawful for us to change this zoning in order to downzone it, that's pretty specifically stated in the Vancouver Charter as something that you can't sue for, the loss in value.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Murray. And since we've got Mr. Murray on the line, I'm wondering if I might ask one more question through you, Mayor.
Sure.
And that's, I'm, I'm struggling with the piece around, around the density transfer not being articulated explicitly in the, in the Vancouver Charter. But as I can see from other jurisdictions, certainly it's supported under the Local Government Act, although it's not explicit either. It seems to be an implicit ability akin to sort of a public benefit strategy. I'm wondering if, if, if there has been a thorough sort of contemplation of the ability for some kind of density transfer in, in keeping with the public benefits for the CAC strategy as opposed to an explicit transfer like the heritage bonus density transfer.
So I'm not entirely certain that I follow the entire question, but I could say these things. One, the Vancouver Charter specifically contemplates the Heritage Bank and the Heritage Transfer. So the fact that we don't otherwise mention one in relation to this is somewhat problematic. It may be that there's something in the Local Government Act that doesn't affect the Vancouver Charter or that doesn't affect the city of Vancouver that's authorizing this. I simply don't know the answer to that. I could inquire with Burnaby as to what it is that they're planning to do in order to create this. But I, I'm not aware of, I was asked a specific question about the transfer of density and said that, look, the only specific one is in relation to heritage. It may be that Burnaby is onto something that we could also do. It may be that it's something that's authorized in the Local Government Act, which we cannot do. That's not, it's not unusual that I get those questions where, why is it that they can do this and we can't? And it's simply that their statute authorizes it. The Charter does certain things, but not everything. I could look into that for you, but off the top of my head, I'm not aware of what you're talking about. I do know that New Westminster won on their so-called downzoning case this week when they introduced rental tenure zoning.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Okay, thanks, Mr. Murray. Mayor, I've submitted an amendment.
Okay.
Now, if we can move to an amendment queue, and in speaking to this.
Fifteen to second at first. Second or for, I know it's just kind of come around, but it was second or for this amendment?
Second, Counselor Fry.
Thank you, Counselor Fry. So now we're on amendment queue, and Counselor Fry, I am going to put you on here to, where did you go? There you are. Okay, up to five minutes.
Yeah, so this was crafted together rather quickly. On reflection, I, I think the, the dates, so one is trying to find some balance here. I think these dates may be a little too far out and a little too long and would be very open to amending that further. But I'll, as I speak to it, somebody else can come up with an amendment to this, perhaps to.
Counselor Fry, I, you know, again, because this is quasi judicial, I am gonna have to, I just automatically check amendments just to make sure we don't totally blow things here. And so I am going to take a few minutes to just, now that the legal team has this amendment, I'm going to just pause your clock and just make sure this is in order before we go too far down the.
Sure, and it has been articulated with staff.
Yeah, I just, as chair, I gotta just make sure I'm, I'm confident in it. So, and I will, let's take five minutes, counsel, and if it takes longer than that, I will let you know. We have a few minutes to get back in shape here. Just so you know that it is, I have heard from both planning and from, I guess, most importantly with law, so it is in order. And, sorry, I'm just going to, I did say five minutes, so I just want to make sure everybody else is back in their chairs and stuff before I start the clock.
If you could please add me or comment.
Sure, yep, yep, you're on the list. It's Counselor Fry, Kirby Young, Boyle, Dominado, Swanson, Dejanova, and Carr. Okay. See everybody here. So go ahead, Counselor Fry, continue on, you have, clock's running.
Or do we put me on an amendment queue, or is that?
You're on an amendment queue, yeah. We're on an amendment queue.
I can't even see what the clock says because of the writing in front of it.
I was a little late starting it, but that's my fault. So you're, you have four minutes left.
Okay, okay. So let me just walk through it. So, understanding that this is a pretty significant change to an existing system, and we did hear some not insignificant concerns, including from folks who are leveraging their equity to build rental housing elsewhere. And I think that's noteworthy. So giving this a little time, also recognizing that, that we, we do recognize that our staff are overburdened, including DBL. And, and so giving a little bit more time, I'm certainly open to maybe not as much time as is articulated here, but I welcome somebody to amend on that. On C, really directing staff to work. What my research shows is that Burnaby's embarked on this exact same process, and it's done quite a significant amount of work, bringing a lot of these stakeholders together and hammering out some ideas that sort of work for everybody, and, and including the, the property owners who are leveraging their equity, including the tenants who are otherwise facing displacement. So I think there's an opportunity, especially as we're contemplating additional future work on the C two zones, to really bring those, those stakeholders together and have a more fulsome conversation. And lastly, because that fulsome conversation in Burnaby has yielded a very tangible result in, in their, what they're calling their density offset. And I've reviewed a lot of the material out of Burnaby, and it, and it seems to strike the right balance, which provides that tenant protection. And basically, what, what's happening through that is the developers are, are relocating tenants into similarly priced units elsewhere because they're being given an, an offset of density that they can then move from that existent location to another location in a different zoning close by. So I think that's the kind of, and as we heard from Mr. Murray, that wasn't something that's explicit in the Vancouver Charter, but it's not necessarily explicitly denied either. And it's quite possible that Burnaby's found some kind of great way around this. It is quite possible, as he alluded, that it doesn't exist, but I think it's worth a more fulsome look into. It's not something that we directed in the original motion that asked for this look at the C two ODP. So I think it's really important to take a look at what tools we might be able to find to protect everybody in this one. Because I, the priority, of course, is to protect renters. But we also want to protect our credit rating. We want to protect the ability to do business in the city of Vancouver. And we recognize that the private market is providing a lot of the important housing that we are relying. And if that private market development went away, we'd find ourselves in a much more challenging position. So I'm really trying to strike a bit of a balance here and really direct a little bit more thoughtful work on what we can come up with, with solutions that can help protect tenants and actually build more, more rental housing and more housing in general. So I'll leave it at that, and do invite anyone who wanted to change up that date a little.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Boyle, up to five on the amended, amendment.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm hoping I can ask a point of information through you to staff on this amendment that was sort of asked in the questions before, but now we have language before us. I'm wondering if staff have any sense of whether a timeframe like this would be likely to see a kind of rush of or increase of sales or, or more importantly, maybe of development applications in this zone to try to get ahead of that date, whatever the closing date that we land on would be.
Over to staff. I know it's tough to estimate, estimate after an amendment's on the floor, but we're all puzzling this through, so any help you can offer would be great.
Hi, it's Dan Garrison chiming in. I think as, as we had said in the, earlier in the questions of staff, I think there is a risk that if you set the date, you know, at a, a time too close, that there could be, it's possible that there could be a rush of people trying to get through before the, the regulations change. I think that, that's, you know, I think the trick is setting the date at a time that is far enough sort of out that it gives people the chance to get their applications through, but not so far out that it, that it, that it, you know, it doesn't put the tenant protection in place that you're seeking for. So I, I think the idea that the date that you proposed in early 2023 is a date that would give people quite a bit of time to think about what their plans are, quite a bit of time to think about a development permit process where they might want to move that forward over that period of time. So I think the fact that you're building in that amount of time would be useful in mitigating the potential of, of that kind of thing.
Okay, and I, I have a follow-up question to that, which is if we were to see an increase in development applications, particularly for existing C two buildings that have rental on them, I assume because that's who this would really apply to, that's the properties we would see. Am I right in assuming that those, that increase in development applications would be for existing C two buildings with rental that would be trying to build condo? Because that's the most impacted shift, that those are the applications we would see an increase in?
I think that's a fair assumption to make because there would be no, there'd be no reason for somebody who wanted to build a rental project to try to get ahead of this because a rental project would meet the, the criteria, even if the rental housing stock ODP did apply.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for those answers, Dan, as we try to puzzle through this, as the mayor said. So I will say that I won't be supporting this. My, my strong preference is that we approve the staff recommend, or the, the report recommendations as laid out in the report. Of course, you know, on a scale of options, I guess I would rather see this than rejecting the report overall. I would rather see this go with a sooner date than rejecting the report overall. But ultimately, I think the recommendations in the report are strong and important. And I do worry that if we're setting a date with a bit of a window, what we will see is a rush of applications and resulting demevictions or evictions based on new developments that result in a loss of existing rental and a development of new strata. And in the current tight housing and rental market, I'm very reluctant to be making policy changes that, that see a, a increase in that type of pressure.
Thank you, Counselor Dominado.
Thanks, Mayor. A point of information for you to staff.
Sure.
Actually, just first question is just to clarify, you ruled the motion or the amendments are in order, but C and D giving policy direction is also in order as part of the dealing with this rezoning?
Yeah, I did, well, I did take a thorough look at it, and that's what I've been told.
I missed the beginning, so my apologies. So again, I'm going to give it granular here, because maybe I'm tired, but maybe staff would walk me through A and B in terms of in-stream protection, is that applying to development applications currently in with the city now? Or future ones that would be submitted by January 1st, 2023, or is January 1st, 2023 the effective date of the bylaw? And when would the bylaw be coming back to council for enactment? So there's four questions there, and I have more, so I'm just putting, letting you know. Many second round of questions for this.
Over to staff, does anybody care to comment on that?
I can start, and maybe, this is Ed Nicho, and maybe Grant Murray can can also chime in. So how this would work, as I understand what you've put forward, is that the the in-stream application that's already referred to in the report are for applications that are in that are in application and deep in development permanent application or rezoning application, or anything that's received a positive letter of support, that's a rezoning inquiry from May 2019 to now. So that's the in-stream application, and I guess if you were to apply this, it would mean that it would apply, it would be enacted on the state in 2023, and anything that's in-stream at that time would be would be exempt as well, so that's how it would happen. Grant, did you want to add anything to that?
Sorry, it's Grant Murray again, no, I agree with that, the draft bylaws that were posed to do accompany this set out the in-stream protection, and if the date was pushed, then it was anybody that was meeting those requirements would not be subject to this change. That's how it's designed to work, there already is in the draft in-stream protection for certain applications, and if the date was pushed, it would be anybody who was in-stream on that date. Does that answer your question, Counselor Dominado?
Uh, somewhat, not completely, and I so I think, you know what, I'm just gonna have to pause there, I'm
You have two minutes, you have two minutes left, so I'll move on to Counselor Swanson, Counselor Swanson on the amendment, go ahead, up to five.
Yeah, I think this is a terrible amendment. Why would we wait almost two years to give C2 tenants the same protection as other tenants have? Leveraging your equity is not the same on Maslow's hierarchy of needs as getting evicted is. And transferring density won't negate will negate the protection that this motion would bring, because it will make it profitable to demolish. And I think the staff went through a number of mitigation measures, and that's what they said was, if we put in these mitigation measures, then we're helping make it profitable to demolish, and then we're getting rid of the tenant protection that the original proposal would provide. And last point is this has zilch to do with the city's credit rating, it's just absurd.
Thank you, Counselor Dejanova? Counselor Dejanova, you may be on mute.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
You can't hear me or can't?
I can hear you, yes.
Oh, okay, thank you, so sorry, I was double muted there, Mayor Stewart.
No problem.
My question to staff on this amendment, actually, I understand it's in order, Mayor Stewart, but if I could ask a question through you to staff, and specifically if possible, you know, I heard that legal staff was on to answer questions, so I do recall there being sort of grandfathering in certain dates in other public hearings, and because those came as amendments, and this is just my recollection, that in fact, the entire public hearing was challenged, and I believe in the case of First Shawnee, and I'm not sure if this is the reason why we had to have several public hearings on the HRA, my recollection was three, if not four, apologies for being foggy on that, but that the public didn't have a possible chance to speak specifically to the dates that are now amended in this. So I'm just wondering if staff could could share whether or not that specifically puts this public hearing in jeopardy, because we did not hear from the public on that.
Sure, and just while we're getting legal up to bat here, I would say Counselor Dejanova, that this, the grandfathering was already included, it appears. What we're altering is the date, but I would now ask
Exactly, and I understand that, but that was my question.
Ask legal to, sure, if legal's there, that'd be great.
Sorry, it's Grant Murray again, yeah, the grandfathering is already in the posted bylaws, and so if anybody was looking to see what it is that we're discussing tonight, the answer would be by reading those bylaws. My understanding of the second question is that the council of the city of Vancouver can amend a bylaw based on the representations made at a public hearing. And that's a broader power than other local governments have, it's different from the Local Government Act. And because these dates have been discussed during, you know, during representations at the public hearing, it would be proper for council, or council can in fact consider altering the dates. If you were looking to do something that hadn't come up at all, then that would be improper, but this was discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, that's that's very helpful to have information on, and can I just ask another point of information through you, Mayor Stewart?
Two minutes left, yep.
And the point of information I'd like to ask is specifically around the the issue of applications coming in, so for instance, would this mean that an application would have to just just literally, there would have to be like a an LOI if they chose to do that, they don't have to anymore, would they have to hit the pre-application? Where in flux in the system would you expect them to be for their application to be considered in this grandfathering? Because that's just a concern of mine, because obviously, you could send something in, but if it wasn't accepted, there could be an argument, well, something was sent to the city, and we didn't hear back.
Okay, that's a good question to any of the team or who's best to answer it.
Well, I mean, I would assume maybe the rezoning planner or someone or our TM of PBS, but
Right, when is something officially in process?
So the way that this grandfathering has been drafted in the in the bylaw, it's grandfathered if the it's in it's in the application, so if there's a development permit and it's in the application at the time of enactment, which in this amendment, you're proposing it to be in 2023, at that time, if if there's a development application that's in-stream, it would be grandfathered, if there was a rezoning application that was in-stream, so their application was in, that would be grandfathered.
Could I ask if if if, does in-stream mean that you, for example, paid a fee or even prior to that?
Mayor Stewart? Point of privilege, Counselor Dejanova, if you're gonna ask a question, can you pause my timer?
I'm just conscious of your time.
I have no problem, I'd love to hear the answer too, Mayor Stewart.
Okay, go ahead, staff.
It's at the time where you've officially, you know, submitted your application and paid your fee. There is one more provision, which is that we, the way that we've drafted the original bylaw is that for any rezoning inquiry that had received a positive letter of response dated between, you know, after May 2019 would also be would also be grandfathered.
Thanks, Counselor Dejanova, you have about 30 seconds left, if you have any.
Thanks so much, well, just just very quickly going to ask, how long would it take staff to respond to an application with with a letter? Just on the average?
Counselor, Dan Garrison here, it's through the mayor, it's typically 12 weeks to respond to an LOA.
Thank you very much, that's excellent and very accurate, and I appreciate having those numbers in front of me. That's all I have to say right now about this.
Okay, Counselor Carr, up to five.
Yes, thank you, through you, if I could ask some questions of staff?
Sure, yeah, please do.
Thank you. The amendment that we're dealing with talks about in-stream protection, it's set out in the draft bylaws, so I'm assuming that there that there already is in-stream protection, that's not the new part to this, is that correct? Yeah, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. And the reason for a date, is that because of some of the recent moves that we've made as council to try and ensure that the DBL department actually has the time to be able to do this, given all the pressures and the workloads on on the organization?
Counselor Dan Garrison, yeah, I think the reason to put in the date is that the current structure of the in-stream protection in the staff proposal is essentially that the bylaw would take effect immediately, it would only apply to applications that are in essentially in process. This would push it out to allow new applications to come in until that date. But I think the length of time that you're looking at here, the proposal for it to be to January 2023 would build in significant buffer for the to help to address the DBL issues that we're facing.
Yes, now, is it possible that that could be done earlier, that to understand, understanding that DBL is under a lot of stress, but but say a year from now, so by April 1st, 2022, rather than the, you know, going beyond this term of this government to, you know, another term, and that's a long time away, January 1st, it seems, so I'm just questioning whether it's possible, and I'm looking for staff response to this, to get this done by a year from now.
Yes, I mean, it is possible to to change the date and to set that outside date at any at any time council chooses. I would say one of the factors we do need to think about is if the intent is to provide owners in the area who were purchased with the idea of redeveloping under the current rules, the ability to continue to do that. We just need to factor in the length of time it takes to sort of prepare, pull everything together to submit a development permit application, and so a year may be a little bit short for that in terms of of timing, but that's a consideration of of council, so there it is possible to move that date up. But it could be any time between between the, you know, the date you're reflecting, which is a year from now, and the date that's proposed here in the motion.
Okay, given my desire to to see a shorter timeline, and if it's possible for staff, and I heard the indication it is possible for staff to proceed on a little more more of an expedited timeline. Mayor, I have actually submitted an amendment to the amendment,
Okay.
which all of you should have in your inboxes.
We need a seconder before we proceed, a seconder?
Frye.
Okay, uh, okay, we're on an amendment to an amendment queue.
Yeah, and I don't need to explain more than what I just did, which is I think that we we want to expedite this as much as we possibly can, given the pressures that exist within the DBL department, but we don't want too much time, we want enough time, and I understand there's a 12-week response by the previous question by Counselor Dejanova response to the department to an LOA, so, you know, I think that that one year is a reasonable amount of time offering protection, but also giving time for for our department and staff to be able to work through these changes.
Point of privilege, Mayor Stewart, could you please add me to the amendment, the amendment queue?
I will, Counselor Boyle?
Thanks, Mayor, I will be very brief and very frank in saying I will support this amendment to the amendment because it's an improvement, and ultimately, if the amendment is going to pass, I'd rather the date be sooner, but I but I still won't be supporting the amendment. Even if it's amended, still won't be supporting it, because I I still worry, even with these dates, that we will see a rush on applications that put at risk existing rental to build condos, and I still would strongly prefer the original recommendations, which I think are a solid and important move for us to stand behind.
Thanks, Counselor Dejanova?
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I do, while I do appreciate this amendment, the amendment by Counselor Carr, because I'm not sure that I'll be supporting the amendment, I don't think I can support this, and I want to explain the reason why. We've heard from our staff that even if we allow people
Sorry, we lost you there.
Oh, sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Great, we're adding to the options for people apparently, but I'm being told that still financially, that a pro forma is not going to work, so we'll still be seeing strata condos. So I'm just a bit concerned that we're spending time discussing something that likely won't happen, that our staff or experts have explained as to why it won't happen, so why we're extending a deadline for something that's not going to happen anyways? I'm I'm just a little bit concerned about that, and then also, I'm just concerned that this this just further extends the amount of time staff can wait to have something come in, but also, I think that it's in a sense, and I really appreciate, you know, the explanation from from staff as to what they would consider in-stream. Because, you know, to some members of the public, or to some people who haven't gone through an application before, they think that that means when you receive it, that might not be after a positive letter, that may not be at a certain point in the process, so I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned here and caution cautious, mostly because of the comments of our staff tonight, and, you know, they're well taken by me, I think I think staff have very well said why they're concerned about this overall. So although I do appreciate what Counselor Carr's trying to do, I won't be able to support this, thank you.
Thanks so much. Counselor Kirby Young?
Yeah. I am trying to choose my words carefully here, and I might reserve some broader comments when we get back to the main amendment queue after dealing with this one.
Lots of queues.
I know, and I've been pretty quiet up until this point, just watching this unfold. But I will say I am struck by the irony that less than 24 hours after enacting a moratorium and not sending more work to DBL, here we are on the fly, doing something that will generate and send more work, and then shortening the timeframe to generate that work forward, so I, you know, in good conscience, and I know we need to stick to the specifics of this particular application, but these pieces are knitted together, so from an integrity perspective, I'm not going to support this one, and I'm going to save my broader comments on the kind of merits of the amendment for when we finish this particular amendment queue, thanks.
Thanks so much, Counselor Hardwick, up to five.
Well, generally, I think that the amendment will have the result of enabling a huge rush of applications. The amendment to the amendment just speeds up the timeline. So in listening to this, I'm kind of inclined to go along with with the amendment to the amendment because of the timeline, and it made no sense pushing something out into the next term in any respect. But overall, I don't support this amendment and the direction this is is going in and would stick with supporting the recommendations in the report. But on the amendment to the amendment, the shorter term, but at the end of the day, you know, there's going to be a large rush of rezonings that would result from this, and more people would be displaced. And in my view, the last thing we need is another density transfer program, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thanks, there's no one on the queue, so I am going to call a vote on this amendment to the amendment.
Point of privilege, go to this in opposition to you.
In opposition for Counselor Dejanova, thank you very much. Counselor Frye? Okay, that passes with Counselor Kirby Young, Bly, Dominado, and Dejanova in opposition. Okay, counsel, that's, uh, we're back to the amendment queue. Counselor Carr, you have a minute and a half.
Sorry, um, yeah, I'm just gonna go off for now. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Counselor Hardwick, you have up to five on this amended amendment.
Thanks. Well, I'll just, uh, sorry about that. I just.
That's okay, no problem.
The, the old mute button.
Happens to the best of us.
Yeah. Um, again, just reiterating, there would be a huge rush of rezonings, a lot more people displaced as a result of this amendment. And the last thing we need is another added density transfer, uh, program. So, um, on that basis, I cannot support, uh, this amendment, even as amended.
Okay, thank you so much. Counselor Kirby Young up to five on this amended amendment.
Yeah, thanks. I don't think I'll need that long. Um, I'm trying to just be clear and direct. Um, I'm befuddled by this, um, amendment, and I'm befuddled by this process, um, because the amendment is nonsensical to me. We had a report that came forward with an intention, ostensibly based on the will of the majority of council to afford extending the, um, O D P rental protection to the C two zones. And now we have apparently conflictual amendments that will actually work to provide the opportunity for redevelopment and move forward. And those to me, those two things to me are just paradoxical. So it just logically does not make sense. These, those are sort of, those are disparate things that do not fit together. And the only thing that I can see that I think it serves to do is an attempt to try to appeal, um, or respond to different stakeholder groups, as opposed to, I think it would be preferable from my perspective to simply look at the report we have in front of us that has been prepared by our policy staff with expertise and determine if council would like to support it, or they would not like to support it. But I was struck by a comment that one of our staff made, and I thought it was well-stated, and it bears repeating, because there's a reason why we have professional planning staff, and they said, and I quote, "Normally zoning changes come through a comprehensive planning process." And this, in terms of what we're dealing with tonight, is unusual in terms of how it came forth from council direction and outside of a quote-unquote "normal, regular, comprehensive planning process." And what I feel we are doing now is making up policy on the fly in an area that is complex and can often have a number of knockoff consequences. And I just don't think it's good policy and practice, generally speaking, to do something that has a substantive impact like this. I also think that, as I mentioned earlier, it just, the amendment is contradictory in terms of objectives. I think there is a appropriate discussion to have for councils to whether or not you agree with the objectives and the strategy in a report. But to sort of start putting these things that don't fit together, it's like Sesame Street, three of these things, or they're not all kind of the same, and they, and they don't necessarily, they don't work together, they just don't. So I, I feel like we're burning a lot of time on something as opposed to just materially considering a report and council making a decision based on their individual perspective. So to me, um, we're going to end up with a stream of applications that are going to negate the intent of this report, whether I agree with the report or not. That just doesn't make sense, and it's just, it's just not good process, and it's not good policy. So I won't be supporting it.
Thanks. Uh, Counselor Fry, just have a minute left on this queue.
Sure. And, you know, I'll just quickly run through this. The dates almost are immaterial to this. What really, I think, was missing from this report, which was my frustration, and I wish that, uh, the rest of council would have had the opportunity, and we could have talked about what Burnaby's been doing, because we can't talk about this stuff outside of public hearing. But Burnaby has had a, a significant issue with loss of rental housing, and with their new government have pivoted to an entirely new housing approach. And what I think's important that's coming out of it is the, A, the conversations that they had, and B, the tool that they've identified, whether it's through the Local Government Act, or, or it's, it's something special, this density offsets tool that they're implementing is a significant tool in the protection of rental housing stock, recognizing a lot of these older buildings are on their way out and are going to get redeveloped for, in this case, strata or whatever. It's actually creating new rental housing. So I'll leave it at that. We've missed an opportunity, wasn't articulated in the report. I would like to see additional work going there. The amendments and A and B don't matter to me. It's the C and D, really.
Thanks. Counselor Carr, uh, you have, uh, just a minute and fifteen seconds.
That's okay. Um, Counselor Patrick, the words out of my mouth. Actually, I, I did make the amendment to, um, A and B because I just did not like that date, um, out there. In case it passed, it was too far away for me. Um, but, um, my real interest in the amendments put forward by Counselor Fry are C and D. Um, I, and we did hear from speakers on this issue, and I think the work going on in Burnaby is worth us taking a really hard look at. Um, so I'd like this severed, um, so that, um, I can support, uh, the clauses C and D.
Sorry, Counselor Carr, so.
I want C and D severed in the vote.
But you've amended A, okay.
No, doesn't matter. I just, i- if A had passed, I wanted it to be, I wanted it to be a, a shorter timeline.
I understand. Okay. Counselor Boyle, thirty seconds.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'm just hoping a quick question, uh, through you to staff on C, which is that I'm wondering if staff would read this as additional consultation that would slow down those reports on, uh, C two planning coming back to council?
You just have a few seconds.
Okay, Counselor, and through the mayor, uh, we are, uh, undertaking additional consultation coming up over the spring on the C two planning anyway. And so I would take it as we could, um, add this, this concept to that consultation that's already planned.
And, and not affect that full timeline.
That's right.
Okay, uh, thanks, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Kirby Young, uh, you've got three, two minutes.
I have some pointed information to staff through you, just based on that last point on C. Um, I'm following up on Counselor Boyle's question. Um, and staff had said they're already undertaking planning. Does the C two planning that you're undertaking already, does it not going to include anyway our discussion about retaining affordable rental stock? Is that part of the scope of the expected consultation now, or is it not?
Uh, through, through the mayor, Dan Garrison, again, it's, um, uh, the, the current consultation is, is largely around the C two, um, bonusing to six stories and the, uh, and the secured rental policy in the surrounding districts. Uh, and so we would, we would needing to just be adding on, uh, a piece related to the retention of the affordable rental stock is, is, I would say, what this motion would, would ask us to do. Um, now, I will say that we are, we have heard back as part of the consultation related to the C two bonusing, um, these concerns, a- and so it, uh, around losses of both rental and local-serving retail. And so it is something that we would be, uh, addressing across, uh, multiple teams in the planning department. Um, but this does give us more specific, uh, direction around, uh, around, uh, this issue of retention in particular.
So, Mayor, uh.
Yep.
Point of procedure to you, to staff's comment that they would be, they've heard back on affordability and would be addressing that theme, um, notwithstanding there's more specificity, but the themes have, have raised, and so that would be part of it. I'm wondering if that would therefore render this out of order. Like, would you call?
No, we've, we've, uh, we've gone down.
That it's already being undertaken, so for a different reason.
Uh, you know, I, I, we passed the whole thing through legal and, uh, and planning. It is in order, so it's really up to us to debate within the, the parameters, unless it was amended, uh, substantively, then I'd have no real reason to go back and, and, and give another ruling.
Okay, the context of my question is that they probably didn't look at it in context of if it was work staff were already doing, as to whether, that was my question. Um, I don't know if legal looked at it through that lens.
Yeah, the, uh.
I'm asking it not.
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask you, the, uh, you rule out of order if council has given specific direction in the past, uh, to look at a particular thing, not if staff just, just happens to be doing it through kind of normal work. So it, it has to be a specific council direction to be ruled out of order in that, uh, in, in, in that sense.
I appreciate the distinction. I would argue that councils are given a lot of direction on affordability, but I appreciate what you're saying. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Counselor Dominado up to two.
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Just through you, uh, point of information to staff, um, if you could just comment briefly on, um, Amendment D, and just is, is this something that reasonably staff could undertake as, as part of ongoing work plans, um, to bring back options around, uh, density transfer in relation to C two, sorry to be clear.
Can you just restate that one more time, Counselor Dominado?
Yeah, sorry. It's just, I'm, I'm seeking staff's, I guess, affirmation that this is something they reasonably could take on as part of their current work plans, is to do this general review of density transfer to report back. There's no timeframe on it, so it's open-ended, um, related to density transfer and C two.
How does it fit in, if it fit in the workload? Okay, uh, over to staff. I don't know if, uh, I've heard Mr. Dan Garrison there, uh.
Yeah, I, I can, uh, could speak to this through you, Mr. Mayor, or.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Stewart.
Okay.
And, yeah, so I think we're speaking about D, which is the direction to staff to look at the merits of, uh, a change to the charter around a density transfer. Um, so that, that's, it's not currently work that we have, uh, on our work program. Um, so we would have to add, add that in and, and fit it in. Um, but it, it, the first step would be to, yeah, would, to would be actually to, to do this would be to assess the merits of, of that, see what is the legal, um, framework, uh, what's happening in other jurisdictions through the Local Government Act. Um, so that, that's work we could, we could undertake. I, I'm not, I would have to go and do more, uh, work on the work program to figure out the timeline for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Dominado. Uh, and that is it for this queue. So, um, gonna call a vote on this amended amendment, and we're gonna sever it. So we'll do, uh, I think the request was to do A and B together, and then, so A and B would be one vote, and then C and D would be another vote, uh, vote number two, unless somebody else would like it severed a different way. Okay, council, so. Yep, we're voting on.
Can I have C and D?
Uh, sorry, Counselor Dominado?
I'm sorry, just because I'm, I'm still reviewing it. Could I have C and D severed?
Okay, so the first vote is gonna be on A and B. Vote number one is gonna be clause A and B, and if the clerks could queue that up, we're in a vote now.
And point of privilege, Mr. Stewart.
Yep.
Thanks. I, I was just asking for a voter assist in opposition, please.
Okay. Oh, crap, sorry. I'm sorry, clerks, you can mark that one. Okay, uh, I'm the only one who voted for that one. So we have Counselor Kirby Young, Bly, Dominado, Boyle, Weep, Hardwick, Swanson, Fry, Dejanova, and Carr in opposition. Lonely out there. Uh, let's see. Uh, we've got, uh, clause number C next.
Point of privilege, sorry, Mayor Stewart. Hopefully it'll be better in an hour, but I'll, I'll need a voter assist in opposition. Thanks.
In opposition. Okay, thank you. And the clerks, yep, there we go, clerks, you can trigger that one. Okay, that passes with Counselor Kirby Young, Hardwick, Swanson, and Dejanova in opposition. Uh, let's see, now we've got, um, final clause D.
And again, sorry, point of privilege, uh, in opposition, if you could mark me for a voter assist. Thanks.
Thanks very much. We have, uh, Counselor Swanson. We need you on this one. Great, uh, that has passed with, uh, Counselor Kirby Young, Hardwick, Swanson, and Dejanova in opposition. Okay, so that amendment, uh, there's a little bit added, but the basic substance of the report hasn't changed. Um, and Counselor Fry, you, you, you're on the main queue with about two and a half minutes left.
Uh, maybe I'll come back. I'm just calling my thoughts.
Counselor Carr, up to five.
Right. Okay, thank you. Um, so, you know, really, the goal of this is to protect and increase, um, affordable housing, especially rentals, obviously, for fifty percent of Vancouverites' rent. Um, so this is incredibly important. I'm just gonna go over some of the stats, because I think they're really worth reiterating. Fifteen percent of all C two sites, that's three hundred and seventy-six sites have rental, that's about three thousand existing rentals. Um, sixty-two percent were built prior to nineteen seventy-five. They have forty percent in general lower rents. Um, the tenant relocation and protection plan does apply to C zones, but rental housing stock O D P requiring the one-on-one replacement doesn't. So extending the rental housing stock O D P would protect a hundred percent of the rental units, and I support that. Um, the pros if development happens is we wouldn't lose rental developments. There are some cons that have been raised, like the land devaluation, obviously a more acute issue for, um, people who have recent, more recently purchased the, the, that land, um, due to the skyrocketing land values in the last decade. Um, escalating land values, I think all of us know that, that is a huge problem in the city for affordability. And I think current land values is not a reason to stop doing it. Um, so, uh, I do, I'm going to be supportive of, of this and, um, and think that, uh, especially if we move forward with encouraging development in the C, C two zones further, um, as we move down, um, you know, our examination of, of zoning in general, um, that, that this kind of protection is a really important one. The most affordable rental in the city is that which is in place, and, um, and we need to, um, at, at the, the minimum protect it, but at the very, um, uh, at the very minimum, ensure that it is replaced and it's, and it's replaced, and as affordable rental as well.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Fry, bottom, eh, a little two and two fifteen.
Sure, thanks, Mayor. So I'll be supporting, uh, this amended motion, although I, I do want to express my frustration with the, the process in general. Uh, I think this is sort of reflective of these, as we add amendments and create, uh, these kind of motions on, on the floor, oftentimes, um, it can be a little bit messy, and I think we saw that here. Um, what I saw in this report back missed a few really big chunks that, that I see happening over in Burnaby. And I, I don't blame staff for that, because it was an amendment on the floor. It, we didn't give that direction to staff to pursue some of these sort of, you know, more fulsome approaches that I think are meritous. And I think the stuff that Burnaby's doing is, is quite innovative and quite interesting. Um, I appreciate that we didn't give direction to fully investigate the powers within the charter, to do things like density transfers and, and those kind of incentives that I think are critical to, and, and it's not like a pro-developer argument, it's about recognizing the fact that we don't have governments building enough housing that we need. So we do, as like as not, rely on developers. This council, not me in particular, but most of this council typically supports all sorts of incentives and D C L waivers for developers. Uh, so it, 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 it needs to be reflected that, that if we're going to be taking those kind of approaches where we're actually, you know, we're about to cover some stuff where we, we've, we've negated D C L contributions to other neighborhoods in support of providing rental housing. So if we're gonna take that kind of cash-in-lieu approach, I think it's appropriate that we look at all the sort of solutions on the table and look at other creative options. And I think, um, I hope that we, in the future, when we do these kind of, you know, directions off the floor of council, we, we, we create more opportunities for our staff to do more creative work and really explore, uh, additional opportunities like we, uh, hopefully may see coming out of Burnaby. So, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Kirby Young, you got your full five.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'm not a big fan of doing these things off, quote-unquote, off the floor of council. Um, I don't think it's good policy and good practice. I think there's a time for some thoughtful strategic amendments, but I think in general, off the floor is off the cuff and doesn't, um, lead to good policy. I think that council always has an option to utilize the referral tool, um, if, um, and refer back to staff, perhaps for some work on something if they do see that there is a gap, um, or an opportunity that has not been, um, perhaps fully leveraged based on circumstances. And, you know, I acknowledge that this work happened over a period of time, and there may be changes in the macro environment in other municipalities, um, that could be beneficial, at which point I would have suggested a referral to potentially explore other things would be, I, I think, a more thoughtful, um, way to go than sort of this, you know, off the cuff on the fly on the floor. Um, however, with respects to where we are with this, there's a few things that really struck me here. Number one, it's really important to support renters. They represent fifty-three percent of the folks in the city. Um, they need to have stable. They need to have stable homes and have some confidence in that, and that's important. And that's why we have a TRP and a more robust TRP and an extended one. So I want to acknowledge that. It's also important that we support and make room for new renters in the city, in terms of the ability to create homes in all neighborhoods across the city. And I was really struck by one of the comments, I think it was from the third-party Coriolis, who said, it's not gonna make it more attractive for strata, but nor is it gonna make it more attractive for rental either. And in effect, he said, the sites in these areas would be sterilized. That sounds like you're spaying somebody or sterilizing them. In terms of their ability to make change and move forward. And change could also be positive, because we do want to build more rental stock, and we do want to provide more ability for people to live in neighborhoods across the city. And that includes quality stable rental as well. And we do have any aging stock here. And I think that's really, really important to note. When you have a number of policy experts, of which I am not one, and I think our job at council is to be good absorbers of information and to take in a lot of facts and try to make good decisions as best we can and be informed by some of that expert opinion. But when you have the professional expertise and advice of our staff who recommended against this originally, you then have a third party with Coriolis who also recommended against this. And I think that that should carry some weight in this conversation, in this decision. Isn't it isn't about protecting renters, but it's also about not falsely suggesting that three thousand people are suddenly going to be without their homes. I think that that is a that is a red carrying. To state that, it's all of these buildings are not going to develop, some of them that are paid for and have lifespan left in them, and the finances are working for the owners are gonna continue. We're not gonna see all of that with, however, we would have seen, actually think, more dispossession of people with the grandfathering clause coming in, which to me wouldn't have made sense, it was nonsensical. I was really struck by the one speaker, I wish I could remember his name. And it was the individual gentleman who had the building I referenced earlier on Broadway and described his specific circumstances of how he lived in that building and maintained it and worked there, and he had a couple of tenants, and he spoke about how he knew that he was gonna be not likely to be able to lease to those tenants, because over time he knew that that older CRUs business was becoming less attractive, it still made him go of it, but he said he had the ability with the current equity it had in the building. And that was somebody who'd had it for a longer period of time, so they had built up equity. But he still said that he still had to borrow to do his maintenance and do his age back and do some of those things, and it worked. And I think there was a counselor that asked him, I said, well, can't you just sell the building? You'd do fine on that. I don't think the answer, the answer to us when we're just considering as a council and something like this is to sell somebody, sell the building. And I think the gentleman said, well, look, it's not net and clear, I'd still have expenses. You don't have to support my tenants, I'd have to pay off my obligations and all that, maybe I could buy a house, sure. But he said, then he said, what would I do for my income and a living? And he, by doing that, by selling that building, because the impact he felt that he would have on being able to do his maintenance and pay that, he would actually be displacing other tenants and somebody else would probably redevelop his property into something else, and he'd be displacing his more affordable CRUs too. So this just doesn't make sense to me for a number of reasons, and I find the whole
Just at five.
Really distressing, which will save me, since I'm out of time for further commentary on any more work to DBL. So yes, I will not be supporting it for the reasons.
Thanks. Counselor Hardwick, you have about three and a half minutes.
Okay, well, our existing rentals are under continuing and increasing development pressures. So this is very important measure to help retain the older affordable rental units. As I've said previously, the most affordable housing already exists. This policy is only a one-to-one replacement of existing rentals. And per the the discussion earlier and analysis of the report, I highly question the claim that this will have much effect on land values. It's a modest rental protection that we owe existing renters.
I assume that the
I think
That's the recommendation.
Sorry, I've got somebody on the, if everybody can mute there, Counselor Hardwick, I will freeze your clock.
That's okay, I won't take my full five minutes, but you know, this has been in place, as I've said before, for decades in R M zones without problems, and it's the least we can do for renters. I hearken back to one of my days living in a flat over a pharmacy, going to university, and you know, these are unique places and they have longevity and hopefully longer than forty years. When I think about the changes that we've added here, I can can live with the amendments at the end of the day. But it's, I really do believe that this is the right thing to do, and for that reason, I'm going to support the report.
Thank you, Counselor Bly.
Thanks, Mayor Stewart, just coming off of mute. Yeah, so I, this has been a really interesting discussion, and I think there's a number of challenges that have been raised by councillors tonight and and across this throughout this process. I did have concerns raised around that I raised in that meeting, I think almost a year ago, around some of the the affordable rental in C two zones, and specifically around seniors and thinking of areas that I'm very familiar with, like Carersdale, where there's a lot of these walk-ups and seeing a lot of development pressure. In this past year, we've had an opportunity to hear from staff, of course, and stakeholders, and really do the due diligence. At that time, we were sort of speaking about this and and not, certainly not hypothetical, it's a very real concern, but but not really with too much tangible information for us to be able to weigh our decision on. That said, I have been paying very close attention to to this process and and I am not going to support the recommendations of staff for not, for for really one significant reason. And I think that we're not seeing a hyper-focused development pressure in those particular areas. It's a consideration for sure, but my, what I've heard and understand from staff and from others is that they're not those sites are not sort of under immediate threat, let's say. And so what I see in this report or in these recommendations is an opportunity in C and D to go and do the work that we heard stakeholders wanted us to do, which is to understand more about what are the options and get back to the table and talk about that. And I think we need to do that before we actually bring these recommendations in. If they weren't to pass, I don't know how it's gonna go. For me, this is more, we heard that there's less displacement and less strata, not accepting the recommendations of staff that were responding to a council amendment, as we know. I think there's gonna be a significant impact on building rental elsewhere in the city. Builders that have a number of sites in their portfolio have that so that there's financial backstop to be able to build rental elsewhere. And so we're looking at this as site-specific, and I appreciate the vulnerability, and we have to be very thoughtful and cautious when we make these decisions around existing affordable rental. But we also have to recognize that there is a, there is a bigger holistic plan that we have to consider as well, which is that we need to enable more rental stock. And so I think that in C and D, we've done the due diligence, thanks to the amendments from Counselor Fry, which is why I seconded them, to ensure that those conversations continue and staff can continue to do that work. That brings a spotlight to where we feel there would be future vulnerabilities in our rental stock and therefore need to do our due diligence to ensure that we put plans in place to protect them. But revaluing land and and downzoning essentially these sites, I think, is a much bigger risk to the city as a whole, in terms of, we need builders to be able to trust and count on stability in order to deliver product. We don't build, we need builders to help us if we say that rental stock is important. So for those reasons, I'm not supportive of A and B, but I will be supporting C and D and requests that we sever.
Okay, thanks, that's noted. Counselor Dominado? Up to five minutes, Counselor Dominado.
Actually, I'm for a point of information. I've been going back and forth with the clerks to get a updated copy of the full recommendations. And the version I have now has A, B, C, D, but I, my understanding, there was an A, B, C, D in the original staff recommendations. I have indication that they believe C and D was struck by Counselor Fry and replaced with his two. I'm not sure that that's actually accurate, and I'm just looking for some clarity, if we're gonna be voting on A, B, C, D, E, or just, so if I could get confirmation from the clerks.
Sure, I'll just freeze your clock. And if I could ask you just to sit a little closer to your mic, because I'm having a hard time hearing you there. Okay, just I've got a note from the clerks here at council, just one second. Just one second, counsel. Yeah, counsel, we're getting the we're getting the the correct final version for you, just one second.
Thank you.
Point of privilege, Mayor.
Counselor Fry?
If I if I can just apologize, that was a function of the auto numbering sequence thing, it wasn't intended to replace the existing C and D.
Right, gotcha.
Thank you. I'm not gonna comment at this time, given the late hour and the fact that we have many speakers waiting to speak, but I will move to sever.
And how would you like to sever, since I just have you here?
A, A, B, C, D can be together. And E and F separate.
Point of privilege, could we get it up on the screen?
Sorry, yep, sorry about that. So A, B, C, D, sorry, I'm on mute on, A, B, C, D is the first vote, and then E and F is the second vote, and it's coming up on the screen as soon as the clerks get there.
Thank you, Mayor.
It's funny when you turn that cone on and you see the clerks in the chamber, and you think we haven't sat in there for about a year. You know, so bizarre, isn't it?
Point of privilege, Ms. Stewart?
Yep, Counselor Dejanova.
Would it be possible to have this emailed to me, just because I've been following the discussion? Thank you. I just want, maybe it hasn't come through on mine yet, thank you.
Okay. Okay, yes, it has been emailed out, counsel. And the clerks are just pulling it up on the screen whenever they get a chance. And again, just a reminder, as we vote, and I know there's a couple more people to speak. Just double checking, yes. Okay, so it is on screen now, and it has been emailed to you. And I'm just looking at the queue, Counselor Dominado, you still have the floor if you want to continue? Are you okay?
Oh, no, that's fine, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Swanson, you have about a minute left.
This is one of those whose side, whose side are we on moments? Should C two tenants have the same protection as other tenants, or should we prioritize the wants of developers to keep their property values escalating, unearned escalating, year after year after year? Should we private, should we prioritize saving affordable rental? I'm not really hot on the amendments, but they're just report backs. And so I'll probably vote for it. But we need to treat tenants, tenants need to be able to have stability more than banks need to have stability, more than developers need to have stability. I've got a seventy-seven-year-old tenant who's being evicted now, and all of her neighbors are calling and saying, what can we do? What can we do? There's no stability for tenants, and we have to do everything we can to create it.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Swanson. So we're gonna call a vote on this one.
And just point of privilege, Mayor Stewart?
Yep.
I know you're severing, but just to make sure I don't miss out, I would like E and S severed, please.
Yes, they are severed. So the first vote is on A, B, C, and D.
Great. And also on a point of privilege, same time, if you could mark me in opposition on those. A, B, C, and D.
Okay. Counselor Boyle, Counselor Dejanova, clerks, please mark Counselor Dejanova in opposition. Okay, so that passes with Counselor Kirby Young, Bly, Dominado, Dejanova, and myself in opposition. Okay, now we're gonna move to the next E and F is the next vote.
Point of privilege, vote assist in favor for me. Thanks, Mayor Stewart.
Okay. And Counselor Kirby Young, Hardwick, and Swanson. Counselor Swanson. And that passes with Counselor Hardwick and Swanson in opposition. Good work, counsel. We are at quarter to nine.
I thought, Mayor, I thought we were severing C and D.
No, E and F.
I'm sorry, I thought we were severing E and F, meaning E was being severed and F was being severed.
No, I packaged them up as one, so that's
Can I call for, to review the vote then? Because my understanding when you said E and F, I thought you meant each one was being severed.
I've been kind of explicit with the bundling, so I'm sorry if you misunderstood. We have cast the votes now, so we would have to
I know it's been a really long week and a long day, but I did
But we have to have a vote to reconsider. Counselor Kirby Young, we have to have a vote to reconsider now, because those votes have been taken. But, no, but we don't have a revote. We actually have, clerks, we have to have a unanimous consent in order to retake the vote, is that correct?
Mayor Stewart, the clerk here, for a reconsideration, it's actually a majority.
Okay, so all in favor of a reconsideration of the last vote we had, which grouped E and F? Is that what you're after, Counselor Kirby Young? E and F, you'd like them split into two? Or you're, okay, so all those in favor of reconsidering the bundled last vote to separate them out, say yay.
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 Oppose, say nay. Okay, so we can go back and do that vote again. Thanks very much. So clerks, we're gonna call a vote on letter E.
Sorry, point of privilege, Ms. Stewart. Counselor Dejanova in favor, please, and for F as well, if I stand by, thanks.
Okay, sure, I'll I'll note that. So, okay, Counselor Swanson for letter E. Counselor Swanson. There we go. Okay, so that has passed with Counselor Hardwick in opposition, and now we're gonna go to vote F. Okay, counsel, that has passed with Counselor Kirby Young, Hardwick, and Swanson in opposition. Okay, counsel, so I suggest, let's see, it is twelve minutes to nine. We do have a whole new item to get through, that's pretty extensive, but I would like to take just five minutes and stretch my legs, if that's okay with everybody. And we'll we'll come back at let's say, let's take a whole seven minutes and come back at five to nine. Okay, see you then.
I'll do the five, Mayor Stewart. Over to you.
Thanks very much. Okay, council, we're moving to item number three on the agenda, and we do have a lot of speakers, so um I don't know if we'll make it through this item this evening, but uh just to let you know, we're at nine o'clock with uh schedule close at ten. Um, this is the amendment to downtown official development plan, area K three on Granville Street. Uh, and just ask, uh, does any member of council wish to declare conflict of interest? I don't hear any. Okay, so we're going to get the clerk to read the application and summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by the general manager of planning urban design and sustainability to amend the downtown official development plan in area K three. Ramble Street between Drake Street and Nelson Street to allow developments where a hundred percent of the residential floor space is secured as rental housing or social housing up to five point O FSR. An increase from the existing three point five FSR. The amendment includes two conditions, namely that the increased density allowance would apply only to a site with the building constructed since nineteen thirty. And to a site with a maximum frontage of twenty-three meters. This amendment would not change the existing maximum height and ground floor retail would continue to be required. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Hundred and eight pieces of correspondence and support, hundred and ninety-three pieces of correspondence and opposition. And two pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to four forty-five today.
Thank you so much. Um, let's see here, sorry, just pulling my script up. Okay, so if there's any speakers to this item who wish to speak to council, please call one eight three 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 five three six one zero code one oh six one four four five hashtag to get on the list. Uh, we have Thomas Daley, the planner, community planning, planning urban design and sustainability on the phone to present the application.
Great, thank you very much. Good, good evening, Mayor Stewart and council. This is Neil Rochelli, Assistant Director of Community Planning. And uh, it's our, it's our pleasure to be here this evening with you to bring forward these proposed amendments to the downtown O D P. K three subarea of Granville. Uh, Thomas Daley will be giving the presentation this evening, and I will be offering some concluding remarks at the end. And staff will be available after the presentation to respond to any questions you may have. And with that, I'd like to introduce Thomas Daley. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much.
Great, everyone can see the presentation and hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Excellent.
Just checking, yeah, it is on the public screen too, so that's good.
There we are. Okay, thank you, Mayor and council. Um, as an outline for our presentation on the proposed downtown official development plan amendments for area K three. I will provide you with an overview of the recommendations, explain the motivation for these amendments as quick start actions in advance of broader planning work on Granville Street. Provide contacts within the D O D P and Granville Street area to find the current zoning for K three and present the proposed updates to the zoning and guidelines. The subject of this public hearing includes the recommendations to amend the downtown official development plan in area K three on Granville Street. Between Hamilton and Drake Streets to increase the allowable density for developments where a hundred percent of the residential floor space is for either social housing or secured rental housing up to five FSR. We are also recommending an update to the Granville Street guidelines to add consideration of low operational or embodied emissions, including the use of mass timber. Just as a quick reminder, uh, council recently adopted and approved a related recommendation at the referral meeting in February that you can see highlighted on the right. This recommendation, which was included in the same report, directs staff to report back this year with a scope of work for Granville Street planning process. That will provide a more comprehensive review of the regulation and policy for Granville Street. To this, council included an amendment to bring forward quick start actions or initiatives that would support economic stimulus and cultural revitalization. With that, we are bringing forward these amendments in area K three that we are, we intended to be quick start actions in advance of Granville Street planning process. These amendments focus on area K three, a transition area located at the southern portion of Granville Street outside of the entertainment district. Where residential is currently permitted and where the proposed changes should not detract from original for entertainment uses on Granville Street. These changes are primarily meant to improve the viability of rental housing as a part of a mixed-use development through modest increase in density to what is currently allowed in this area. As you can see on the right, a typical mixed-use development cannot fully take advantage of the building's envelope and heights currently allowed under zoning in this area because of the density limitations. The intent of these amendments is to maximize density within the existing allowable building envelope. While promoting innovative, sustainable design and construction to foster new building typologies in the downtown. These amendments are also meant to unlock un or underdeveloped sites, mainly empty lots in this area that remained undeveloped for many years. With exclusions that would prevent negatively impacting existing heritage or the character of the street. Nor would it have a direct impact on cultural space within this area. Lastly, these changes support council's objectives to increase rental and social housing across the city. While generating new activity along this portion of Granville Street for businesses and other amenity. It is important that we note the role of the downtown official development plan referred to as the D O D P. And it's the role of K three within it. The D O D P divides the downtown into variety of subareas. And each of these areas provides specific guidance on heights, densities, uses, and related design guidelines that contribute to the overall experience of the downtown. And collectively, they promote the central business district as the regional employment center. Also identifies entertainment, cultural, and retail hubs and contribute to establishing distinct livable and walkable neighborhoods for downtown residents. We can see historic Granville Street is highlighted as areas K one, two, and three in the D O D P. Many of us know Granville Street is one of Vancouver's iconic commercial high streets. An important and regional destination that draws visitors to the city. Located at the heart of downtown as part of a popular retail district and is home to many theaters, live music venues, nightclubs, restaurants, and bars. That make up the Granville Entertainment District, which you can see highlighted in the light gray area on the map. Between Georgia Street and Nelson Street. Granville boasts a unique concentration of neon signage as well as heritage buildings that contribute to its character, including a number of historic theaters and hotels, including a number of SRO housing as well. This section of Granville Street was downzoned in nineteen ninety-one, restricting heights and densities as a means to maintain its human scale. And ensure access to sunlight along the street during the day while preserving heritage buildings that faced demolition through redevelopment at the time. This decision also intended to concentrate entertainment, live music, and nightclub venues in the Granville Entertainment District. And restricted, restricted residential development within area K one, which you can see in blue. And this has an exception for rooming houses existing as of October seventh nineteen ninety-seven for that area K one. Areas K two and three provide transition areas from the entertainment district to the date adjacent high-density residential neighborhoods in the downtown south. And allow for residential uses as a part of mixed-use development where continuous ground floor retail is a requirement for all development along the length of these three K areas. We can see area K three highlighted in a red, which is the subject of today's recommendations. And it is adjacent to New Yale Town, Hornby Soaps, Granville Loops, and the Vancouver House. Zooming in a bit further, the map on the right provides further context for the neighborhood in and around K three. Again, residential development is currently permitted in this part of Granville Street as a part of mixed-use development. Where there are currently several strata rental and social housing buildings highlighted in purple. This is an area that is well served by nearby amenities, transit, and parks. There is currently three SRO buildings located within this boundary highlighted by the orange dots. While area K three is located outside of the Granville Entertainment District, there is one cultural facility located within the subarea, the Scotia Dance Center. We can also see that there are a number of heritage listed buildings located in this area as well, and those are highlighted in the pink dots. Moving on, this is the current zoning I'm going to walk through now. Currently, the zoning in area K three allows density up to three and a half FSR and a height limit of ninety feet. Within the prescribed building envelope, which you can see on the right. Residential is permitted and retail is required at grade along the entirety of this area. Hotel, office, and service uses are also permitted in this area. And it's also worth noting that there's no area-specific zoning policy for this area. Now, moving on to the Granville Street guidelines, these are used alongside the D O D P to further promote the creation of the entertainment district. As a pedestrian-oriented shopping area and the unique character of the historic high street through building design. The guidelines also promote neighborhoods serving retail in area K three as well as compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods and ensuring livability for residential projects. However, the guidelines do not reflect the city's current policy for sustainable construction and design. This brings us to the recommendations that are for discussion tonight. We are recommending an increase in density of up to five FSR in area K three for mixed-use developments where a hundred percent of the residential density is social housing or secured rental. This recommendation does not promote, promote a change, propose a change to height or ground floor retail requirements. And would exclude buildings constructed before nineteen thirty. And would instead target on and underdeveloped, developed sites in this area, such as the site you can see on the right, which is also adjacent to a mixed-use rental building in the area. And it would also exclude sites with frontages over twenty-three meters or seventy-five feet. These exclusions are meant to prevent any impacts to heritage in this area, as heritage will be addressed as part of the broader Granville Street planning process. However, developments that do take advantage of this policy would complement the character. Areas K two and three provide transition areas from the entertainment district to the date adjacent high density residential neighborhoods in the downtown south and allow for residential uses as a part of mixed use development where continuous ground floor retail is a requirement for all development along the length of these three K areas. We can see area K three highlighted in red, which is the subject of today's recommendations, and it is adjacent to New Yelltown, Hornby Soaps, Granville Loops, and the Vancouver House. Zooming in a bit further, the map on the right provides further context for the neighborhood in and around K three. Again, residential development is currently permitted in this part of Granville Street as a part of mixed use development where there are currently several strata, rental, and social housing buildings highlighted in purple. This is an area that is well served by nearby amenities, transit, and parks. There is currently three S R O buildings located within this boundary highlighted by the orange dots. While area K three is located outside of the Granville Entertainment District, there is one cultural facility located within the sub area, the Scotia Dance Center. We can also see that there are a number of heritage listed buildings located in this area as well, and those are highlighted in the pink dots. Moving on, this is the current zoning I'm going to walk through now. Currently, the zoning in area K three allows density up to three and a half F S R and a height limit of ninety feet within the prescribed building envelope, which you can see on the right. Residential is permitted and retail is required at grade along the entirety of this area. Hotel, office, and service uses are also permitted in this area. And it's also worth noting that there's no area specific or zoning policy for this area. Now moving on to the Granville Street guidelines, these are used alongside the D O D P to further promote the creation of the entertainment district as a pedestrian oriented shopping area and the unique character of the historic high street through building design. The guidelines also promote neighborhoods serving retail in area K three as well as compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods and ensuring livability for residential projects. However, the guidelines do not reflect the city's current policy for sustainable construction and design. This brings us to the recommendations that are for discussion tonight. We are recommending an increase in density of up to five F S R in area K three for mixed use developments where a hundred percent of the residential density is social housing or secured rental. This recommendation does not promote, promote a change, propose a change to height or ground floor retail requirements and would exclude buildings constructed before nineteen thirty and would instead target on and under developed, developed sites in this area such as the site you can see on the right, which is also adjacent to a mixed use rental building in the area. And it would also exclude sites with frontages over twenty-three meters or seventy-five feet. These exclusions are meant to prevent any impacts to heritage in this area as heritage will be addressed as part of the broader Granville Street planning process. However, developments that do take advantage of this policy would come complement the character of the existing streetscape. And we can see just an example of recent infill development on Water Street, which is another high street heritage character area in Vancouver. And lastly, the frontage restrictions are meant to manage large lot consolidation that would erode the fine grain character of this street. The recommendations to update the Granville Street guidelines will encourage a high degree of sustainability through the use of mass timber or other materials that result in low embodied emissions and a commitment to near zero emissions in operation. Further, consideration will be given to varying form of development advice and guidelines to accommodate sustainable design features. These updates would support the Architectural Institute of British Columbia's professional practice guidelines for encapsulated mass timber construction up to twelve stories and will help to advance the city's climate action goals. With regards to implications as the result of these proposed amendments, we do not anticipate displacement of existing residential, including S R A designated buildings, and that uptake will primarily be on vacant or underutilized lots. In regards to commercial space and hotels, we do not anticipate displacement or reduction of commercial space, including retail, service, or hotels, and that the provision of retail and service uses would continue to be required at grade. We anticipate no impacts to character in terms of heritage, density, and height because of these changes, and we see this as an important contribution to lower embodied carbon pollution, saving hundreds of tons of emissions through buildings that promote these guidelines. Lastly, we do not anticipate land lift for any of the eligible properties based on the proposed amendments. In conclusion, we are bringing forward these recommendations as quick start actions in advance of the broader Granville Street planning process, which are meant to encourage new investment and activity in this area. We are seeking modest increases in density in area K three to improve the feasibility of mixed use rental projects on on and underutilized sites within the current heights and building envelope. This is in a transition area that currently allows residential and does not detract from entertainment uses on Granville Street. Further, these changes are meant to encourage innovative, sustainable design and construction, including mass timber, and support the city's climate action goals. Forthcoming Granville Street planning work will get underway this year with staff reporting back to council with a scope of work and budget for this work. This planning process will provide a holistic review of issues and opportunities and will inform policy and zoning updates, including heights, densities, and heritage in areas K one, two, and three that support economic stimulus and cultural revitalization for this area. This work will build on the recommended amendments before you today. And with that, I'll pass you back to Neil Rochelli, Director of Community Planning, for some final remarks before we turn to questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your attention on this item, and thank you to staff for your very hard work on this proposed O D P amendment. I'd like to make just a few concluding remarks that highlight just the key points that are before you this evening. The, the proposed amendments are designed to unlock underdeveloped sites for mixed use buildings with secured market rental and social housing in an effort to address a council priority. This sub area of the D O D P was created with the intention to have residential positioned as it is on the, on Granville as it transitions back to the high density residential in South Granville. This proposed amendment is consistent with that original intention. It does offer the opportunity for new activation on Granville Street by bringing new residents and users to the street while maintaining the continuity of ground floor retail. And it does so without undermining the Granville Entertainment District or changing the height or form of development from current zoning. And finally, it augments our design guidelines to encourage green building technologies that further advance a key council priority. Again, we thank you for your consideration of this item, and staff are here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks so much, staff, for that. Just before, I see a lot of councillors on the queue. So we have no applicant for this, this, this report, council. So you will have an opportunity to ask questions after we hear from speakers. I am aware that speakers have been waiting since, you know, perhaps seven o'clock or so for this item, and we have eleven on the line. I'm just wondering if, you know, it's totally up to your discretion, but if you waited to ask your questions after the speakers, after the speakers speak, then at least we could afford them the opportunity to do, to do that. It's just.
Point of privilege?
Yes.
Counselor Dejanova, move to hear from speakers?
Um, point of order, Mr. Mayor, I'm actually on the queue for to do that and to move that. I don't think that's a point of privilege. I think that's a point of.
But any, that, that motion can be moved any, anytime by any.
Oh, sorry, point of privilege, could I go on the queue to, to move that?
No, no, it's fine. If people want to move. So there's a move to hear from speakers. It's that.
That's point of, but Mayor, that's not a point of privilege.
Who cares who moves that, like, yeah, it's, it's moved, it's on the floor. Do we have a second or for that? Do we have a second or?
I'll second, right.
Thanks very much. All in favor of hearing the speaker say yea? I'm in the middle of a vote. All in speaker, all in favor of hearing from speaker say yea?
Yeah.
Yay.
Oppose say nay? Great, okay, thank you. Council, so we're going to move to.
Mayor, I have a point of procedure. I am on the queue then. Can you just clarify, please, and if we are now allowed to bring forth motions like that through points of privilege now and not?
No, it's not through point of privilege. You can, you can move a motion on a number of items without having the floor. One would be, for example, a recess that's allowed to be moved without the floor. There's a couple of others and I'm sure the quick glance through the procedure bylaws will, will help with that, so.
I will peruse those. Thank you.
Thanks. So clerks, we're, I'm just going to start going through the list. We have speaker number one, Elizabeth Wood.
Mayor Stewart, it's the clerk here and speaker number one, we do not see on the line at the moment, but we do have speaker number two.
Great, okay, so we have Teresa Mund, Teresa Mund.
Am I, can you hear me?
I sure can. You have up to five minutes, council. I'm just going to clear the questions queue, and then if you'd like to ask Teresa Mund a question, please put yourself on, and please go ahead, speaker, up to five minutes.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Teresa Mund live in the Yelltown area, and I'm opposed to the three parking lots, which is the Ramada Enterprise and Howard Johnson Parking Lot. The agenda or the readouts is very difficult to understand. It's very ambiguous, very vague. I still don't understand what a three point five F S R is. So perhaps when I'm done, someone can give me some answers to that. I mean, like you said, very vague, very ambiguous, the whole writing. Currently, in this two block area, I've done a bit of work. I've walked around the block. There is sixteen S O Rs and rentals, which in our two block area is more than enough. I did count some of them. So in this two block area, I've got a list of them all. There is Howe, ten sixteen, twelve forty-nine, between those two, there's two hundred and ten rooms. And to find which one is a room or not is very difficult. Granville, thirteen hundred street, twelve sixty-six, twelve sixty-one, eleven sixty-six. That looks like three hundred there, eleven sixty-one, hundred rooms, eleven thirty, forty-two rooms, eleven twenty-five, seventy-four, ten sixty, Vogue eighty, on and on with these numbers, as I said, in that area alone, fourteen sixty-nine, that did not include the Howard Johnson up to the Howard Johnson coming into the neighborhood. The residents were very good about the different housings, the social rentals, but after the Howard Johnson came in, there has been a lot of problems with crime. As you know, anyways, I won't go into that area. So now, if we have these three new sites, we currently have three that are proposed. There's the vape shop that is at Davie and Seymour, which is apparently a women's housing. Don't know how many rooms that's going to be. I heard thirteen floors and I heard fifteen, depends on the parks, the sun shadow. I mean, no one has answers for any of this. Then there's the Covent House that's being built. It's about the tenth of the eleventh. Again, don't know how many rooms are going to be in there, so those are not in my count. Then the new one that's proposed at Drake and Seymour or Drake and Richards. I don't know if that's been approved or not. So these are unaccounted rooms. And then there's the seven eleven on Davie and Drake, which been approved. So all of these are numbers within this two block radius that keep coming up. So we are saturated. We have done our part for social housing and rentals. The neighborhood is very tense. I mean, everyone's talking about this economic stimulus that is going to happen. Well, there's no economic stimulus. The cultural saturation, I don't know where you guys are coming with on that one. But anyways, I am just saying that enough is enough. And I think we have done our part in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't see any questions on the queue for you, so I am going to move to the next speaker. Clerks, I believe, speaker number three, Selena Ruland is on the, is on the line.
Yes.
Hi, Speaker, please go ahead whenever you're ready. Up to five minutes.
Perfect. Hi, my name's Selena. I live at Nelson and Richards Downtown, so not too far from area K three. I'm calling in support of the amendment. Given the current state of housing in Vancouver, the city, you know, should be using any tools within its authority to secure rental housing and social housing throughout the city and particularly in this neighborhood. While I can understand the concerns of those in opposition to this proposed amendment, I believe that some of the concerns are based on misinformation regarding the correlation between social and rental housing and crime rates. I see from many of the written statements in opposition to this amendment that unhoused populations in downtown are being scapegoated for, for crime rates and drug use and unsightly premises. And, you know, social housing and rental housing don't cause addiction. They don't lead to crime. These are social and medical issues that have been amplified by underfunded mental health and addiction services across the province and barriers to accessing the, the minimal services that do exist. So housing insecurity actually exacerbates these issues. Therefore, for those concerned with the current state of the downtown core and crime, I believe your concerns would actually be addressed by improving access to housing within this area. For myself, as a young professional, and I'm a current grad student in planning, rental housing is the only type of housing that is within reach for myself and many people across Vancouver. And I don't see homeownership as part of my reality anytime soon. So we need to move past kind of just acknowledging the housing crisis and this massive gap in median housing income and, or lack thereof, and housing prices in the city and start actually, you know, making policy changes that enable this, you know, development or the development of affordable housing, which is what this amendment is doing. So again, I'm in support of this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for calling in tonight and participating. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Speaker number six, Arsh Dylan. Arsh Dylan, speaker number six. Clerks, do we have Arsh Dylan on the line?
Mayor Stewart, I understand that speaker number six is not on the line.
Okay, how about speaker number seven, Arma Dalaewal?
And again, I understand speaker number seven is not on the line.
Let's go for number nine, Catherine Hollensey.
And that's a ditto.
Okay, thanks. We could just cut it down to yes or no, probably.
Okay.
And we know it's you. So we have number, number eleven, Alistair Kent.
Yes.
Okay, great. Alistair Kent, speaker number eleven, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Hear me?
Yes, you can. Please go ahead.
Good, thank you. Good evening. I see you've had a lot of correspondence, and I was going to ask if you had read what I submitted, which is about a one-page fairly intense letter expressing my disappointment in the way that council and, and other government have imposed the kind of changes that were exemplified by the Howard Johnson takeover. And that's really sort of eroded trust in proceedings. But to put a constructive request on this, I'm not against rental housing and supporting those less fortunate. I think that that pain needs to be spread around and not focused on one's own like this one. As Teresa mentioned, we are already kind of overwhelmed with these kinds of housing, and it's, it's a struggle to put up with a few of the people that come along with it. It's a pleasure to live alongside, and we, we should be privileged to live alongside those fortunate enough to have subsidized and low cost housing. But what's missing is consultation. What's missing is a plan that's robust and supportive of a variety of people that were encouraging to come and live in this great city and live in this very rundown piece of our city at the moment. The eight years I have lived here, I have walked back and forth to the downtown where I work and seen a gradual degradation. What happened at Tyler Johnson was absolutely shocking until finally some services came, came to bear. But my point is that we need consultation. We need the community to be involved in the planning process. And above all, I would argue that the rezoning is premature. There's a plan, to make a plan to upgrade and support and encourage Granville Street to become the cornerstone street of the city, to do something with the vestiges of heritage that still exist along it, and I totally support that. But I absolutely implore you to not rush this, to put in plans, some inclusive discussions that will involve us and help us to work with you to create a, a, a well-balanced, well-serviced development. Granville Street can be great once again, but it's, it's an absolute shambles, and it's, it's a contradiction to the gateway concept of which the Vancouver House is intended to be sort of the mascot of, and the upgrading of the Granville Bridge as well. Let's try and work with those positives, but please hold back on approving this piecemeal development, which is just, it would seem, intended to use up some cheap unused land. It's a quick fix, which I think is going to be a huge backward step. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you for your time this evening, and I know it's a late one, so appreciate you hanging on. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move to the next speaker. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we have speaker number twelve next, Michael Geldert.
No.
Okay, speaker number thirteen, Laura Balance.
No.
Okay, speaker number fifteen, Mike Morissette.
Yes.
Okay, Mike Morissette, speaker number fifteen, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Okay, hello, Mayor Council. First, I'd like to thank you as part of H V A N discussion over the moratorium issue of distancing capacity. It comes for great for hospitality, and we're very appreciative. I spent a lot of time recently. I have a nightclub in the corner of twelve nineteen Granville, which is in the corner of Davie and Granville. And I think if anybody would spend some time up there, they would realize what a disaster it's turning into me. I can't imagine putting another eleven hundred beds up there. It seems a little bit of a misreputation by city by talking about like, these are families moving into these houses. This is going to look like the downtown east side in, you know, a year and a half, and it's not cheap. Like, I think I spent some time in King Street West, and they have so much pride in our entertainment district. And they say our entertainment, the speaker or the council member said that our entertainment district stops on Nelson, which is news to all of us who have nightclubs and restaurants all the way down to Drake. So it will definitely influence that, like it influenced. So it will definitely influence that, like it influenced Yount Town now, and it's not cheap. I mean, Howard Johnson was bought for $55 million on 110 beds, which gives us a value of about $50,000 or $500,000 per bed. So adding another 1,100 beds would have worked out to be $500 million. Cost of people's bills. So I'm thinking, if we put that money in the DTS, we could really do something.
Sorry, Speaker, we have some background noise, so I just want to make sure. I think it might be somebody who's unmuted, so just if I could ask everyone to mute, and we'll start your timer. Yep, please continue. I think it stopped now.
Okay. I just think another 1,100 beds, if we're spending the same amount of money, $500,000 per bed, that's $550 million that we could put into the DTS where they do have programs set up and some boundaries and really do something big, without risking the 10,000 jobs and $750 million in revenue that the nighttime economy currently, obviously pre-COVID. So anyways, I hope council will reconsider this, and we can have more discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. It looks like you do have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, you don't. Counsel, I've been informed by the clerks that we missed Speaker thirteen, Laura Balance.
Hi, Councilman.
Hi, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Hi. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I am speaking tonight on behalf of the Hospitality Vancouver Association, which I think many of you know is a not-for-profit association overwhelmingly comprised of independent-owned and operated small and medium businesses that include many of the city's bars, pubs, restaurants, and live venues. And I will point out, the majority of them are on the GED, and a number of them extend well past into the area where staff had said that it was not included in the GED. So many of our members are a vibrant part of the entertainment district, all the way down to Drake Street. Our members make up a portion of the 250 liquor primaries in the city, which generate in excess of $750 million in annual revenue and employ over 10,000 people with a sustained monthly payroll of over $5.3 million pre-COVID. Today, I am speaking on behalf of those members strongly against the amendment to the Downtown Official Development Plan, Area K3. Our reasons for our opposition of this amendment are wide-ranging. We strongly oppose making such a significant amendment that has the potential to drastically change the fabric of Granville Street prior to the completion of the visioning process for the street. As businesses, we are expected to follow visioning process, but this amendment wouldn't hold true for the city itself. Our businesses have invested significantly on Granville Street, in many cases in the millions or tens of millions of dollars, and between them, just on Granville Street, employ thousands of people who want and hope to return to those jobs post-COVID. And to make such a significant decision as this amendment requests outside of the visioning process would break the trust of our businesses and by extension their employees. Further, we completely question the rationale of adding more people suffering from drug addiction, mental illness, and abject poverty into the city's designated entertainment district. Our members have witnessed over the past number of months the negative effect of combining those in need with those seeking entertainment, and we believe that the long-term result, if this amendment passes, will create many more problems than it solves as businesses close and the jobs go away. As the core of the entertainment district, and I stress that, the core of the entertainment district, the GED is critical to the social fabric of our city, for our residents, for the regional tourists who visit it, and for those visiting Vancouver from around the world. Finally, we believe there are more appropriate locations for supported housing than the city's entertainment district, areas that are both more appropriate from a cross perspective, but also who have the support services for those who you are seeking to house. We strongly urge council to vote no to this amendment.
Thank you so much for your time here this evening. I've got a question from Councilor Carr. Councilor Carr, please go ahead.
Yes, thanks very much. And yeah, thank you so much for taking the time to come to talk to us and to the work you do in the community, so appreciate that very much. My question is this. You've talked about the Granville Street revisioning process being ongoing. What's the timeline on that?
Well, it hasn't started, and that's our entire point, is that we've been told that there is a process and that it is expected to be completed in 2022. And so we are hopeful that the city will adhere to its own processes and before making such a drastic decision, which would have such an effect, that you will go through that process.
Got it. So do you think that that process could incorporate a discussion of this kind of a proposal that's in front of us right now?
I think that, you know, when we are making significant decisions about, that will have a significant impact such as this, I think everything must be considered as part of that visioning process. I am terrified of the idea of presupposing that when we will not have the ability to walk it back if it turns out to be catastrophic. And given the effects so far, Councilor Carr, I hope that you will agree with me that unsupported and such a significant and intense infusion of people in this district will change it significantly to the point that the visioning process would be moot.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you. That's it for questions. Thank you for joining us so late on the evening before a long weekend. Very much appreciate it.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Happy Easter.
Thanks. Okay, we are on to Brian George, Speaker number sixteen. Clerks, no Brian George?
No.
Speaker number seventeen, Aldos Azdari?
And that's a yes.
It's a yes.
Hello.
Hi there. You have up to five minutes. Speak to council. Please go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hi, thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Aldos. I work and live in the downtown area. Despite being opposed to this project, I don't want to disregard the importance of, you know, saving homeless, but I do think that we can do it without hurting the entire Granville Street community. I think that if allocation is spent on housing in less expensive areas, then there would be remainder budget to assist with mental health, jobs, and other resources they need. I think that the plan is being completely unfair to the community of people who have spent their entire life saving, building businesses in the area. We've spent years creating culture and community, which is already being destroyed by the new Howard Johnson residents. That change has made the area extremely unsafe to live and work, and it's turned completely chaotic. My worry is that this would lead to more business closures, which would be eradicating the thousands of long-term jobs these businesses have been working on for years. And, you know, would be wiping out the tourism sector of Granville Street and basically erasing its history. So, you know, I feel that it would be complicating the problem, spreading it and creating new issues where they don't exist and rather than solving it at the root. So I'm hoping that we can still help our homelessness, but at the same time save Granville Street from what's been happening right now.
Okay, thank you so much. I don't see any questions for you, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Counsel, just looking here, next speaker is, darn, right, Alexander Kushner. Speaker eighteen?
No.
Okay. Nineteen, Kelly Tompkins.
No.
Okay. Twenty, Richard Campbell?
No.
Okay. Twenty-one, Tamara Fras.
No.
Okay. Twenty-two, Roxy Feller.
And no.
Okay. This, twenty-three, L. Antonio Chevalier.
No.
Okay. Twenty-four, Oliver Lang?
Yes.
Okay, Oliver Lang, Speaker number twenty-four. Please go ahead whenever you're ready, up to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've prepared a small presentation. If the crooked piece of content shared up.
Sure. Clerks, are we prepared to do that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks. It'll be up in a second, and I'll let you know, and we'll... Oh, there it is. It's up there now. So please go ahead. You have, and just say next when you want your slide to move.
Perfect. Thank you. My name is Oliver Lang. I'm the CEO and co-founder of Intelligent City and LW Pack, an urban housing mass timber technology company and an architecture firm respectively. I've previously served as the acting chair of the city's urban design panel. The K3 area shown here in green has provided housing for decades, and the surrounding areas are already predominantly high-density urban housing. The official development plan bylaws from 2015 for downtown Vancouver requires to create attractive places in which to live, work, shop, and visit to meet the highest standards of design and amenity for the benefits of all users of downtown, encourages owners to consider flexibility and creativity in the preparation of development proposals, and encourages more people to live within the downtown district. With this amendment in place, we have everything we need to ensure the creation of quality development and urgently needed secured market rental housing for families and professionals, and we strongly support this amendment. Next slide, please. A few facts about mass timber. A few facts about mass timber. BC is a world leader in sustainable forest management with a regulatory requirement in place and the capacity of using trees from managed forests to satisfy all of our housing needs. Mass timber buildings are safe, and the ARVC and GEBC published two days ago an extensive practice guide for high-rise mass timber construction, which we co-authored. Mass timber enables systematic and advanced off-site prefabrication of importantly repeatable and scalable building solutions, and it offers superior quality, enables affordability in near-life cycle carbon-neutral buildings forever. Next slide, please. The housing industry is facing simultaneously three major problems: an affordability crisis, an industry that is responsible for 39% of carbon emissions, and an industry seemingly unable to innovate to address these problems while continuing to create one-off buildings of poor performance and that are expensive to operate. Next, please. The K3 amendment provides the framework that lets us respond to these deeply entrenched problems, jump-starting innovation for the convergence of high-quality solutions that are scalable and repeatable from consistent mass timber platforms enabled by powerful manufacturing technologies. The federal and provincial governments and the industry, like our company, are making investments in the tens of millions of dollars at the moment that let us provide answers to the pressing questions that council has asked for. Next slide, please. Prefabricated mass timber buildings can be erected quietly and fast with far less impact on neighborhoods. Next slide, please. At Intelligent City, we have a highly innovative building designed and ready for construction this fall in the K3 zone. This amendment will allow for an industry-first, fully prefabricated, nine-story, mass timber, high-rise, mixed-use market rental housing. The project will deliver 60 beautiful, highly sustainable homes and will be Passifrost certified and boost near-carbon-neutral footprint, and it will be an important catalyst to activate Granville Street. Next slide, please. It will provide highly desirable housing solutions for professionals and families. Buildings under the K3 amendment will not exceed the current permissible height limits of 90 feet, but just use residual density on these sites instead. And the building site for this building is currently an unattractive vacant parking lot, creating discontinuity in the urban experience. Next slide. The K3 amendment enables a quadruple resiliency win: sustainability, affordability, social connection, and high-quality livability. Every home offers quiet sleeping with bedrooms and courtyards, even on Granville Street, and provides access to exterior spaces and gardens. Next slide, please. The list of benefits is extensive with major reduction in lifecycle cost per home, up to 33%, betterment of affordability, fast project delivery, and providing an immediate path to near-carbon neutrality. This bylaw amendment will provide density incentives to developments that commits to simultaneously advance quality-secured rental housing supply in combination with mass timber mid-to-high-rise construction, unlocking these particular benefits. Next slide, please. It is enabling a path towards repeatable and scalable quality mixed-use developments that can be near-carbon neutralized, I mentioned, catalyze innovation in housing affordability in construction and in emergent timber construction today while advancing and enhancing Granville Street overall. This kind of positive change is urgently needed, urgently needed, and should not be missed. Thank you. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much for your presentation and participating tonight. I don't see anybody on the queue to ask you questions. Oh, there's Counselor Weeb. Counselor Weeb, up to five minutes. Please go ahead.
Yeah, my first question is on the sound. Are you utilizing triple-glazed windows and passive-house kind of sound to ensure that the viability of an entertainment district could still be preserved and the livability of the units of homes?
Precisely, yes. We will use triple-glazed windows, and as I mentioned, all the homes can have bedrooms on the quiet side of the building through the courtyard typology.
So along the windows on Granville Street, what would be, that would be the living space and other things that would be utilized in that area?
Yeah, largely all secondary bedrooms, but again, they have high-performing windows, yeah.
And if this policy doesn't pass, what are your other options to deliver this type of building?
That's a good question. I think it will be difficult.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. And that's it for questions. Counsel, we are at 13 minutes to 10. I doubt there's any appetite to extend beyond 10 o'clock unless you want your chair to fall over. We have probably one more room for one more speaker, maybe two. So just alert the speakers on the line that if you're past, say, Speaker 28, I don't think you have a chance to get in this evening, but we have Peter Moonen next.
Are you okay?
Yep, I can hear you fine. Up to five minutes.
Thanks very much. My name is Peter Moonen. I've born and raised in Vancouver, spent nearly all my life in Vancouver in the Lower Mainland, and currently live on the Sunshine Coast. But I work as the National Sustainability Manager for the Canadian Wood Council, which is a not-for-profit association providing technical support to designers, owners, contractors, building officials on building with wood and products. And I'm calling in support of this amendment. I will make my comments specifically in the context of wood, the environment, prefabrication, and affordability. I wanted to point out that the city has demonstrated leadership in moving to a low-carbon-built environment, both in energy efficiency and since, I believe, May 2017 by developing a plan and an objective of reducing the embodied impact of our buildings. This redevelopment provides an opportunity to demonstrate that prefabricated, low-carbon structures can be high-performance, overall sustainability, as Mr. Lang has just mentioned, versatile, beautiful, achievable, and affordable. In early March, the Canadian Wood Council Woodworks BC program worked with BC Housing to show what is possible for prefabricated wood, affordable structures, including mass timber and taller buildings, as Mr. Lang mentioned. More than 300 people participated. These were developers, contractors, designers, and building officials from across the Lower Mainland. And while many people are asking what the role of prefabrication is in the future of construction, I would argue that the future of construction is prefabrication. And that would mean both a need and an opportunity for mass timber where density is desired as well as low-carbon outcomes. Moreover, it will mean that governments will have to find ways to educate, encourage, support, and permit prefabricated projects like the ones that you're intending in this particular area. This amendment will also demonstrate to government agencies, to design, construction, and development industries what your intent is and what is possible using advanced prefabrication systems, many of which have been used in Europe since the 1980s. If we open our minds to what is possible elsewhere, perhaps we can bring it here, and we need to try it. The future of... The future of housing must be both affordable and low-energy, though, and this amendment addresses the city's desire for that because it is to be affordable, low-carbon, e- energy-efficient, and accessible. There are a few things I'd like to have you consider about changing the bylaws that allow quality housing, um, to be delivered. Um, and I, I should say that your efforts should be encouraged and supported. One of the questions that were often asked, though, as mass timber proves effective is the question of whether we have enough wood and o- and the overall forest sustainability. And, and I say forest, not just wood supply. We're fortunate here in BC and in Canada to live in a country where more than ninety percent of the forest land is owned by the Crown, and provincial governments set annual allowable harvest levels. These harvest levels are based on what our forest can give, not on just what we want or what we think we can sell. So the maximum forest, uh, harvest level in British Columbia will not change just because there is a market opportunity. I, I think that's really important to say. What will likely change, however, is how our wood is used, um, and where it is used. And mass timber products used in British Columbia can make effective use of that wood that is otherwise, um, shipped elsewhere or may not be suitable for structural use. So you're adding value, longevity to our buildings, and economic bill, uh, benefit to the province. Some of the other outcomes this could deliver is, uh, as Mr. Lang mentioned, prefabrication speeds up the construction project, uh, process and delivers faster, uh, housing with less neighborhood disruption. That includes parking, noise, deliveries, et cetera. The quality of building in a controlled environment off-site is better, and that will become increasingly important as building codes move us to greater performance targets, and building envelopes will become increasingly complex and less able to be site-built effectively. Third, off-site prefabrication concentrates both labor pools and, and reduces waste thereby and increases productivity. The first labor is an issue in British Columbia and in Vancouver right now. It's a global phenomenon, not specific to here. Fourth, you're, the city's efforts to reduce embodied carbon are best met using local wood products like mass timber. These resources are manufactured in our whole province and are good for the environment and the economy, and it's becoming increasingly desired by both designers and contractors. Fifth, there's new design software and performance-based, uh, uh, and technology and performance-based building codes, um, manufacturing technologies, all of these things that Mr. Lang mentioned. These are all aligning to prefabrication, and it's also a global phenomenon. Finally, Vancouver is blessed with some of the world's best wood designers, engineers, architects, contractors, who have demonstrated the potential to create high-performance buildings, including affordable housing, using prefabrication with wood products. So let's capitalize on that expertise and show what's possible. So with that, I, um, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks so much. There are two counselors on the queue. Uh, counsel, we are at eight minutes to ten, so, uh, just so you know that. And Counselor Carr, up to five minutes for questions here.
Great. Thanks very much, and I really appreciate you coming to talk to us, uh, tonight, Peter, and for all the work you do, and I know information you provide to, uh, the staff on, on this. Um, so my questions are, number one, um, uh, is your goal to actually, um, coordinate with our staff or to provide information to our staff to enable, um, the kind of changes we've already been making under our Climate Emergency Action Plan to incorporate mass timber into construction citywide?
Well, I'm available and have been in contact with staff over the last several years, as you know, um, including, um, in- informing them on climate smart forestry, on design opportunities. Uh, I know the city has, uh, has, has really tried to reduce, uh, the carbon, so you, uh, with the Wood Council, uh, and the Woodworks program are there, uh, we're a phone call away. Um, and we do work, um, we initiate contact, and we also support the staff. And, and you've got some really dedicated staff. I think you're very fortunate to have a staff that is looking this far down the road and incorporating both in- embodied and operational impacts.
Great. In terms of forestry itself, um, is the mass timber and the, um, the materials that goes into, um, the prefabrication, um, does it come from old growth or second growth?
Most of the, uh, the wood that's used in mass timber is spruce pine fir. It's from the interior. It's conventional lumber that would go into light-frame housing here in British Columbia and elsewhere. Um, the, we, we found that that interior wood, the, the wood around Prince George and in, in the Caribou area is the most economic. It's the easiest to manufacture, the most available. And, and really what we're doing is we're transferring the use of that wood, some of which is not suitable for structure, and using it in mass timber in a structural fashion. So we're uplifting the functionality of some wood that might end up going into concrete forms or, or packaging and crating and stuff. Um, but i- it, it's basically coming from the interior, which doesn't have the kinds of old-growth forests that we have here on the coast. I, there's no, there's no CLT that's manufactured using, uh, coastal species to, to mine all, at least not in BC.
Okay, okay. That's good to know. And, um, uh, does the, um, uh, sorry, uh, i- is this expanding as a, a, um, an opportunity for, um, employment within the, I mean, or is that what this, this, the industry is actually stimulating in BC in terms of a, a sort of sustainable, uh, forestry jobs?
Well, it, it, it has two effects. It, it, it's provides, I guess, a, an uplift or a higher value use for products that are typically exported. Uh, we supply a good chunk of the United States lumber, uh, for their home-building industry. And by, by using it in mass timber applications, we're, we're both creating jobs in the, in the logging sector, uh, we're securing jobs in the logging sector, the milling sector, the manufacturing sector, like Structure Lam and Kolesnikov, the newest, uh, CLT entrant in, in Canada, um, and in the design and installation. So it, it's, there's increases, nominal increases all across the, the spectrum from in the supply chain.
Yep, that's, that's awesome. Okay, thank you. Appreciate your answers.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Counselor Weep, uh, you have up to five minutes, and it's, uh, you have only four minutes because we're four minutes to ten.
Um, I won't need that. Um, I guess my one question is, in this board of talks, that this type of form would increase the affordability. Um, and I'm just wondering, have you worked with our team to deregulate some of our processes, recognizing that some of the cross-laminated timber and mass timber building are struggling with building inspectors coming in and asking for extra vents or covered wood or other that add significantly to the expenses to the building owner?
Well, when the first, uh, mass timber building that I think most of you, uh, you're familiar with, that Brock Commons, uh, UBC was built, there was, there had not been research and testing to prove the efficacy of a, of a single layer of, of, um, of drywall. So they had three layers. That increased both the cost and the mass and the environmental impact. But as building officials and research and engineers, uh, they, they all work together, and as they sort of educate themselves on what the, what the materials can do and how best they should be designed, um, then it becomes easier for a, a building official to responsibly, uh, approve a, a design. Uh, you've got one of, uh, an office building just below City Hall, um, at, I believe it's Seventh and Yukon, the Fasten Up Building. Um, and that's, that's got a very advanced seismic system, and I think, um, you, the building officials have been tou- touring through there, understanding what, how the, how is this building built so that they understand it for the future? It's a learning process. It's a learning process for the manufacturers, for the designers, and for the building officials, and that's an area that, that the, the Wood Council tries to help as needed and also tries to point people in the direction of, go talk this, this person, see this person. Um, there's just a new, a new commercial building built in North, the, um, Lower Lawnsdale in North Vancouver, and, um, one of the, the, the chief building official for the city said, we have to learn. We have to learn how these buildings work and why we should be having more of them in our, in our, uh, communities. So I'm happy to sort of connect with any of you counselors on that.
Okay, that's what I was talking about, because I know that, but stuff into the elevator and others, and I just want, I like the idea of making it affordable. I love the idea of moving in this direction. Um, go ahead and not forget to say that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Point of privilege, Ms. Stewart.
I'm just gonna-
I've received correspondence saying that speakers had been missed, and I sent that to the clerk. I won't correspond with anyone because it's public hearing, but I just wanted to check and make sure that speakers weren't on the line before their turn and were accidentally missed by the moderator.
Well, it's all a moot, a moot point. I'm just calling for, we have one minute left, uh, and so I'm going to call for, ask for recess, motion to recess until Wednesday, April seventh at six P M.
Move them to recess until-
Thank you, Counselor, uh, Hardwood, seconded by Counselor Dejanova.
Yes, before we vote on it, point of privilege?
No, we're in a vote now, all in favor of recessing after it before ten. Say yea.
Yea.
Oppose nay. Thank you so much, counsel. We're recessed until Wednesday, April seventh at six P M. Have a great weekend. You totally deserve it. It's been a, it's been a long one. Thank you very much, staff and clerks and all who participated this week.
Thanks, staff, for sharing there.
Thanks, man. Thanks, guys.
Happy Easter for those that celebrate.